Here by call to order the Roseville City Council work session for Monday, March 11th, 2024. Ms. Olson, would you call the role?
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Eddon.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. And with us here at the table, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's sort of across from me on my right, and our assistant city manager Rebecca Olson is sitting in for city manager trudgeon this evening. He's not available to be here. Thank you for being here in his place. With that, I would just remind folks, if you need any copies of meeting materials, there is a master copy in a binder on the back table, and there are also extra copies of the agenda under the clock for anybody who might need that as far as members of the public. We do want to assure folks that if you have your phone with you, that you either silence it or otherwise make sure it doesn't disrupt the meeting. With that, then I'll ask folks to stand if they're able for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and he does so with the routine of justice.
All right. Next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. I think because of the fact that we've got a fairly straightforward agenda this evening, I might just ask if there's any objections to the agenda from the council this evening. Hearing no objections, the agenda will stand as presented. With that, the next item on our agenda is general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are either related to city business or of interest to people in the community but are not on this evening's agenda. We always do want to provide an opportunity at the start of each meeting for that sort of public comment. We will certainly provide for the opportunity for public comment as agenda items come up specific to those items. But is anyone here this evening for general public comment? It's not appeared to be the case. With that, then we'll proceed right into our agenda. We are right into our business items this evening, and our first business item is to receive a presentation from Ramsey County updating the Dale Street construction project that's planned, I believe, for this year. And we have our public works director, Jesse Fryhammer, to make introductions this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Luis Flores with Ramsey County. He's a project manager, so I'll turn it over to him, and he can give an intro to the Dale Street project that'll be ongoing this summer.
Thanks, Jesse.
Hello, everybody. Luis Flores, Ramsey County, working on things traffic, and I'll be talking about the Dale Street safety conversion for this year. So I'll just cover three main bullet points, being the project overview, the need, and then the schedule and public engagement, what's been done so far, and then just the construction when that's set to take place. So the overview and the need, in 2021, I believe, possibly earlier, there was a study that was completed for Ramsey County.
I can't see.
Rob.
I can't see. Is there any way I can see that?
They have to turn you around.
No, I think she wants to see the presentation.
Oh, the screen.
There you go. Thank you.
Can't you see?
There's no way you want us to turn you around.
Good thing it's a short meeting.
Sorry about that.
After the presentation, it won't be much of an issue.
So we identified quite a few corridors along the county that are set or that are prime for four-to-three lane conversions. The four-to-two lane conversion is essentially a road diet. You go from four to three lanes. The way the county does them, generally speaking, it's basically a millon overlay. It's an opportunity to do re-striping and to kind of put back down what you lifted up and make it safer, hopefully, for the public. So this four-to-three lane conversion corridor was identified a few years ago, and then it came up for a millon overlay. I applied for funds, H-SIP funds from the government, so it is mostly federally funded, and it's a collaborative effort between Roseville, City of Roseville, and City of St. Paul. Some of the stakeholders besides the cities have been Metro Transit. Obviously, we've talked to the public. We've talked to commissioners as well, and we've talked to businesses as well. So we've just talked to everyone we can think of, the way we usually do things at Ramsey County. Along with the four-to-three lane stripe reconfiguration, there's also going to be signal replacements as well as modifications. On the screen, the teal bullets are replacements, and the purple ones are modifications. So these are going to be brought up to state-of-the-art of what's expected in most new signals. And perhaps the most important aspect of this project, at least to me and to the county, is the pedestrian enhancements and the different aspects that are going to be made safer for pedestrians throughout the county. So that's the long and short of this project. It's on Dale Street. I should probably mention that. It's a Dale Street project from Front Avenue, north of Front, all the way to Level or just south of Level, which is the first intersection, I believe, after Trunk Highway 36. And so again, these are the project limits, and basically, we took a look at the whole corridor, just did some parking assessments of the whole thing and just see how it was utilized by the residents and businesses, et cetera. And so essentially, once you cross Larpenter, the street just has a slightly different feel. That's also the threshold for the city of Roseville and the city of St. Paul. And so we looked at all those different aspects of both the north side and the south side. Coincidentally, we are planning to, once we bring a contractor on board, and this goes out for bid, to do the millon overlay in these two segments while keeping all the traffic open to the public. So that's essentially the corridor. Typical cross-section on the left side, right under project overview, you see what is out there now. So it's the four lanes, two in each direction, and essentially pedestrians are able to cross at signals. That's basically where they would feel more safe as opposed to just crossing all four lanes of traffic. As you can imagine, crossing three lanes of traffic reduces the conflict points. And even better, if you cross one lane of traffic, meet a pedestrian refuge, a ped island in the middle, and then you cross the other one, that's even safer. You do it in two different stages, and then one conflict lane at a time, essentially. So the bottom graphic there shows the cross-section from an aerial view. It shows what a typical ped refuge is going to look like, and you see the bike lanes, which is something I haven't mentioned until now, the implementation of bike lanes on both sides of the road, north and south. But that's essentially what the cross-sections are going to look like once the project is completed. We, in meeting with Metro Transit, we consider different stops that could be consolidated for their request due to lack of usage or minimal usage. Consolidations, and then they ask for a few upgrades, and we are going to upgrade wherever we are able to, which is most of the asks that they gave. I will mention that you said you pulled up the layout. That layout has a couple of changes that need to be made. One of them is the Larpenter southeast corner, which the layout doesn't show a change, but there will be an upgrade to that bus stop in the southeast corner of Larpenter and Dale. There's a couple of other minor changes, but it's fairly straightforward, and it's fairly true, other than a few minor things. I'd be happy to answer those at some point. So somebody had asked about the locations. Hopefully, that, oh, it looks okay. I was worried that the dots would be too small. So I just went over the layout, and I just picked up where the different ped refuges were going to be located. Ped refuge, it's the same image on the top right as the prior slide, and this was based mostly on the first open house. A lot of the public had a lot of opinions as to where these should go, as you would expect, and that's the reason why we have them, because we want to hear from the public. So whether it was people wanting to cross to the park, cross back and forth, because, you know, just neighborhood to neighborhood, this and that, we took all of those into consideration. We took all the comments, and we just kind of looked for patterns, and that's how we basically implement what we're able to implement as part of this project. So I believe I counted them as eleven. Yeah, eleven ped refuges throughout the corridor as part of this project. Now, the project need, obviously, the millon overlay is a straightforward. It's a, you know, the road condition requires that the road be milled and overlay. But as far as from a safety standpoint, why, this was a good candidate for a four-to-three lane conversion. On the screen, you'll see all the crashes for five years from 17 to 21. I believe these were the ones that were used for us to acquire the H-SIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program funds. So you'll see that there's quite a bit of crashes along this corridor. It's pretty relatively busy corridor, and it connects to a couple of big highways. And so that was kind of the big driver for us going after the funds, and more importantly, for us to be able to implement this safety-driven project. The information on the top left, I already mentioned it, but I'll reiterate it. There's a less conflict points for the pedestrian to cross as they're crossing the street. And then something I haven't mentioned up until this point is the through lanes are going to become more narrow, which also helps with speeding, which has been a big problem not only in Twin Cities, also Minnesota, and all the world since COVID. So anything we can do geometrically to be able to get people to slow down without even knowing that they're slowing down, that's kind of what we can do without forcing people to do the right thing, right? So that's the background for the project need. You see all the crashes. There is a, this is an exemplar intersection, which is Maryland, which is the ice cream cone place. It's going to be a little tricky when staging comes in the summer, because construction takes place in the summer, so does ice cream eating. So we'll have to figure out a way to get creative here, but that's in the plans. And so this one, I highlighted it here, because as you could see, and hopefully that's not too small, there in the bottom right corner, you see that there's three bike crashes, three pedestrian crashes in five years. And then one of them was serious. The line between serious and the fatality is just sometimes luck. I mean, it's so close. So yeah, it should help with the pedestrian and the bicycle safety along this corridor. So the schedule and the public engagement that has taken place up until now, this is basically a snapshot of the schedule. We started our collecting of data back in November of 2022. We had our first open house about a year ago, January of 2023, and at that one, we basically just presented a four-to-three all along Dale Street, and we just, you know, we gave the public sticky notes, and we said, you know, let's, you know, go nuts, wherever you want to put them. So we could look at it that way, also online, all sorts of other different ways. And so in the first open house, or during the first open house, we heard a lot of the word pedestrian and road design. So what you see here on the slide is that the bigger the bubble, the more the pattern of that word being used. I think that meant the app uses a similar logic when you were ever in a conference, and somebody says, you know, participate, and this is a version of that. So in the first one, a lot of mentions about road design, pedestrian safety. And so while we are designing this in-house, we did hire a public engagement agency to help us convey all the messages better to the public. It's kind of what they do. And we said, this is what we need to do. And then they set up all these different open houses, and then they help collect the data. They bring us the data, and they said, this is what people are saying. Okay, so now we got locations for different upgrades, et cetera, et cetera. And then there was mostly support for the corridor, but a lot of people had a lot of input as to where they wanted the bed refuges, or, you know, this bus stop here, or I don't feel, and so obviously, we listen to everybody, and we do what we can do. So we got 150 written comments, 80-plus community members of that first one. From there, we were able to feed that design a little bit better. We don't anticipate as part of this project, because it is a millon overlay, that there will be any right-of-way acquisition, because as you can imagine, or as you know, that takes about 18 months, two years, and it becomes a much more complex project. We want to stay within the curves. What can we do to lift up the ground, put it back down, restripe it, and make it better? So that was kind of the goal, and so there's no right-of-way needs as far as this project. We took the input from the first open house. We applied what we could to the layout, and then we had a second open house in June of last year, and we heard a lot of similar stuff. We had more written comments this go-around, but basically, the three big bubbles here are the three big bubbles from last time, which are roadway design, pedestrian, and safety. So there was a lot of support for the pedestrian islands, which I'm pretty, I was pretty happy to hear. So that was the second one. There was still room for input, but we were getting closer to that, you know, final design as to what's going to get built. And then so finally, between that one and the third open house was when a lot of the administrative stuff took place. You know, this is mostly federally funded, so there's a lot of backend forms and things to fill out, and there's an environmental process as well. So we were doing some of that, and then some of the design as well. We had our final open house late last year, and I was hoping to be able to inform them more of how the construction would take place, but a lot of that information comes and gets discussed in the pre-con meeting, pre-construction meeting, when you talk to the contract that got hired for the job, and you kind of work out those details. And so all I was able to say to them, based on other four-to-three lane conversions that we've done, is that we're going to stay open, and it's going to be constructed under traffic. And basically, we're going to be updating the website as we learn more as to how the closures will happen, and we'll send out postcards and do all that stuff, as we've done in the past. And so that brings us to construction. This is a snapshot of a timeline I've just talked about. We are basically end of April, maybe beginning of May for going out for bid, and so things are really, really busy right now, because we're leading up to that point. And so we're anticipating anywhere from eight to 10 weeks of construction time once it starts. A big part of this project that we're keeping in mind is there's also the Rice Street project, which is going to be out for bid in June or July. And so we have to, while there, we're not going to be sending residents to each other's work zone, you have two roads that are fairly close to each other, and we want to keep that overlap to a minimum. So we're hoping that project goes as expected, the Dale project. Maybe there's a little bit of, you know, punch list stuff at the end, and then Rice Street is already getting going. So I've been talking with the project manager for that project, and we're coordinating to do what we can to, you know. I know Minnesotans can be pretty nice and say, that's construction. It's either construct, what's that saying? There's only two seasons in Minnesota, construction. I'm not from Minnesota. But winter and winter.
It's winter blending.
Exactly. So I think, I think we can accommodate a minimal disruptions. That's what we're shooting for, but at the same time, it is construction in Minnesota. And so with that, I just took a snapshot from near map, which has a lot of recent aerial shots, just to see what the progression of one of these looks like. So in this case, this is Maryland. They implemented the center islands. A lot of the concrete work gets done before the asphalt work, so I believe that's going to be the case here as well. One thing I didn't mention that I think is extremely important, during the public communication of this project, I went back and turned the numbers for safety as far as what has safety looked like in the locations where we've done this. What did it look like before, and what does it look after to compare? And there's a 37% reduction on average of crashes. So that's across the board. That's all of them. That's not public-facing data, but if anybody were to request it, I'd be happy to provide it. And it's basically just a breakdown of all the crash types and all the occurrences and all that. So that is a number internal to Ramsey County. It's not a MINDot number. It's not a US number. That is a number to our county, based on our crashes, and based on before and after data at these four-to-three lane conversion locations. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. My apologies for the phone disruption after I had asked everybody else to silence. Didn't push the on button for my silencing. Anyway, appreciate the information. Thank you for taking time from this busy time as you're working to get the project out to bids to present to us, but I thought it made sense one more time to bring it back before the council, but also the residents of Roseville to provide an update as to kind of where things are at and what this summer may look like with the project. With that, I will open it up to the council for any questions or feedback. Councilmember Graff.
Just a quick question, and I know this is covered, but I'd like it to be discussed so the public can hear. How do you handle the curb cuts for wheelchair access and people with strollers? Because that's the one thing I hear along there when I've been door-knocking, is people with kids getting across there or someone who has views.
So that is obviously something that goes into consideration, and this project and all our projects have to go through a state aid review, and as part of implementing this project is upgrading the ADA, the Americans with Disability Act.
Exactly.
Aspects of signalized intersections. You saw the signals that are going to have work done on them, and so all of that is going to get addressed as part of that. At the signals, obviously, and then obviously, you have the ramps.
Yep.
There's ramps that are going to be upgraded throughout the corridor as well, and I don't know if you were asking specifically about the ped refugees.
Well, the refugee, yeah, yeah.
But there's, there's.
There's in the middle, I assume, too, otherwise it's worthless.
Right, right. So it's got to be fitted with things that, you know, people with disabilities are.
Oh.
And domes that they can touch, and then for people on wheelchairs, obviously, they have to be able to get their.
Other questions or feedback for Ramsey County? Councilmember Strawn.
Thank you. I just was curious why there wasn't a crossing between Larpenter and Dale. Just, I didn't know if that was.
Um.
Signal noted on your.
Did you say signal or cross? You said there's no crossing between.
There's no, I didn't see a street light, like a light on your list. I showed that you had that ped. Is there a light destined to be at that intersection? It was north of Roselon, it looked like.
There, I guess I'm not understanding the question.
No new traffic signal.
No new traffic signal.
Dale and Dale. You said Larpenter and Dale, so I think. Oh, I think that's.
No, I'm sorry. I think I'm, and I was actually thinking at Roselon and Dale.
Between Larpenter and Dale.
Between those two intersections. Sorry, I'm over at my house on Lexington. No, between, between Larpenter and Dale. I don't see a signal along Dale at all there, and I know that's a really big concern of a lot of people, that there's not a place for their kids to cross from the park.
Yeah.
Over to their house.
So a big part of, and this isn't an easy decision or anything we take lightly, because we do hear from people, so we need crosswalks. We need crosswalks there, and so we have guidelines that we follow. One of the guidelines that's not met that is crucial, to take it back to the ADA perspective, is that if there's no destiny, there's got to be a destiny and an origin for a crosswalk to take place. And so if in the origin, you have a ramp, and you have a crosswalk, but then you have nothing for people to land on, to put their foot on somebody in a wheelchair, then that crosswalk is not, it's, so that's part of what goes into the decision-making. And so I can tell you off the top of my head that that's the reason, but I bet if I looked at the map, there'd be something related to that. We also keep track of all of our communication with all our residents and as to how decisions are made. So that's the reason for that, and there's also a different aspect as far as the density of St. Paul residences to the south of Larpenter as opposed to the north. But we did put a couple, maybe more than a couple. I don't have to count them. But there's one at Sandhurst, I believe, that crosses to the trail at the school, and then one at Ryan that crosses to, I don't have the name of that trail on my head, but there's a trail.
The Dale Street Trail.
The Dale Street Trail.
Yeah. So that's the reason behind it.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I was thinking that, that Roselon might be more of a throughway, just because it does get all the way to Rice Street. There's really nothing else between Dale and Larpenter that gets all the way across over to Rice Street, and so I didn't know if there, you know, I have seen accidents there. They're few and far between, but I hear most of people's complaints that I hear are about pedestrians walking north to south in that corridor, that it's a challenge, and that there's some topographic issues and things like that, having to go down to the trail.
Right.
Below and such. So I appreciate the bike lanes. I think that was another big concern that I've heard shared.
Other questions or feedback?
You say you have the map, the more detailed map of the project, please.
Just maybe while you're pulling that up, to follow up on Councilmember Strawn's question, the, it probably is the case that the Roselon-Dale intersection doesn't warrant traffic control beyond what's there now. Is that fair to say?
That's possible. Again, I don't have it fresh in my head as to each decision. I just know that we, as far as the crosswalks go in the center islands, they were very heavily from the cities and from the, from the public as well, as far as their requests.
Sure.
There might have been something at the location, but there must have been a reason as to why that wasn't, because we look at everything that people suggest. It's my job, so.
I mean, and I appreciate that there's the one just north of it at Ryan, but I know that I've heard many people complain about not being able to safely get across in between those two major thoroughfares.
I really appreciate you bringing that up. That was actually feedback I not always nicely brought up to these folks in June, and then again, this fall. I think it's a huge missed opportunity that we had here, and I think we're only, in fact, talking about landing points. I think we landed with several issues with landing points. So the intersection you're talking about in this Strawn is there, Councilmember Strawn, sorry. If you would go straight at Roselon, you'd fall off the edge of a pretty steep grade, right? And so there's no sidewalk there, and there's no sidewalk on the east side, the side that Roselon is on there. So there's no way to really move from Roselon to anything safely? Thinking about that first pedestrian refuge there in red at Ryan Avenue, have you gone out to look at this location?
Not recently, but I will add that that southeast corner, there is a ramp that's going to be there that is not showing at the moment.
Sure.
And that was from, from the city's request and conversations.
My, my question is actually on the west side there or the top side there. There's short pillars, wood pillars with a thing there, right where you have that going through. Is there any intention to cut through that line and put in an access point? Is that the plan?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. That is what it is, and the pathway is a whole separate thing, so I will ignore that. But I just noted that that has this contiguous line there, and then you really go further into the woods there to get to that with some grade changes. So I didn't know if that was the best location, but I'm guessing it's because of the bus stop.
That's part of it. That goes into it. That, and then the turning vehicles as well. You know, the turns that need to be made at the intersection, so.
Okay, can we go further north?
Just maybe before you leave that, on the west side with the connection to the existing trail, certainly cutting through the cable and that can be done. With the grade change issue, is there any concern about ADA compliance when you're, if it's a fairly steep grade change from the roadway down?
It's not too steep, but it's there.
Well, I just wanted to make sure. Do we have to, like, do switchbacks or something?
No, there's a threshold that has to be met, and if that threshold's not met, then we start talking about potential horseshoe or a potential for, there's actually a situation like that on Sandhurst, where we couldn't, just going straight, we couldn't get it because of that grade, and so we have to go at an angle. We looked at other different, yeah, we went back and forth with the city. I went back with the designers.
But in this particular one, that doesn't meet that threshold?
Yeah, correct.
Before you leave that section, I'm just wondering, there is no sidewalk on the east side of Dale there, so if people are coming from Roselon and the lake and the trail that's more significant there, then they get here to the intersection at Dale and Roselon. They can't get across there. They need to go north. How are they getting there if they're on the east side of the intersection?
We do have the tunnel under Dale Street just south of Roselon.
They're going east down Roselon around north, south McCarran's, and then.
It's a bit of a long way around.
It's not.
If you're walking, it's, it's pretty challenging.
Yes.
We also don't have pedestrian improvements on Roselon, that's on chunk of Roselon either, so it's, it kind of works both ways. But yeah, theoretically, you use the trail that's 100 feet south of Roselon, go up, use the tunnel, connect to the trail and get over. So it's by no means perfect, but that's, I think, was the overall intent was back when that was built back in the day.
There's also replacement of all, if not most, of the guardrail along Dale, because a lot of it was out of standard. There were some strange things going on there. So we're going to bring that up to, up to standard.
North, Councilmember.
If we could go further north, please. This next refuge island, I'm guessing again that there's a bus stop on the east side by the B-Dale Club. Is that accurate? Is that why that is there? I don't see it marked, but I'm, I think when I drove by there, is that something that's disappearing?
I think the bus stop is this right here.
Okay.
In the map, which is on the website, and again, it's mostly up to date, there is a key that shows which bus paths are new, which ones are being removed, and which ones are existing.
Yeah.
And so I don't see the one at B-Dale.
Okay.
I suppose it's, it's possible we missed it, but I don't see one at B-Dale, but I do see a new one just north of there.
Yep. I think they're probably moving it further north. So then the question is, why are we crossing there?
At B-Dale.
Crossing, yes. To coming to the east side to the B-Dale Club, there's no sidewalk there, and so we are coming, as we said, to a no landing point.
Right.
We're going to come to a concrete pad that's there, and then it goes nowhere.
That was part, if I recall, from the input from the public, and when I say guidelines that we follow, there's also some engineering judgment that goes into it. So most of the time, we do abide by our guidelines. We try, but some, in some cases, when it's not, let's see, restrictive to other different aspects of the design, then we're able to just go, okay, we'll do this. And so that's, it's an exception to answer your question.
What happens if you move it to the north side of that driveway for the B-Dale Club and the park, where there is a sidewalk? I'm just wondering why we have it going, when we have a sidewalk 30 feet north, why are we going to a spot that does not have a sidewalk?
Is there preferred turning movement to the left turn?
I think that's, I think that's what went into that. And again, it's a lot of conversations, but I, and I could always get back to you. I have your email address. So I believe that one was partly due to the turning movements in and out of the club.
Okay. It seems like we're missing.
So can I?
Can we add a little concrete to the sidewalk?
Well, here's what I'm about to say. If you move.
Well, here's what, here's what I'm about to say. If you move, let's say you move that, uh, pet refuge over here, right?
Yep.
So now somebody going southbound trying to turn left is not able to do that. So that's, that's what went into that. And I, as I was saying, and I was reminding myself.
Can we add fifteen feet of sidewalk then to connect it to the driveway?
Going north?
On the east side.
I don't think we can do that this late in the design.
Okay, well, I, it just, when we talk about we're trying to make pedestrian improvements and having people land with, there's no sidewalk. And we talked about this before, that this, the application was for to pick up the bedoumen, let's put it down, repaint. But there's a huge missed opportunity. And then we're seemingly continuing that missed opportunity by having people land in a yard. I don't, I don't, why are we putting the money into it if it's gonna land in someone's yard? That's, I don't understand that. Doesn't make sense.
Um, I would say there's other aspects of the project that are very beneficial to the public.
Sure.
So I, it was my pockets, you'd have a sidewalk there.
Okay, well, maybe it's our pockets.
Maybe, maybe we can save some money elsewhere.
We've done a lot of connections, uh, including there, so maybe that's something for us to talk internally. Because that just doesn't make sense for us, so. When you talk about the upgrades, uh, at the corner of B and Dale, um, there's some pretty significant, um, yeah, just a little to your north there, or swiping further to the right. Um, pretty, pretty awkward, um, probably not ADA compliant things. Go, go to the, uh, major intersection. Thanks. Especially that northeast corner, or as we look at the map on the bottom right side, um, the signal post for truck crossings kind of sits in the middle. It's, you can't even get a wheelchair through there even if you wanted to and super uneven and there's steep grades. I assume that's all part of this, that that's gonna get torn out and regraded and things moved so that things operate.
This is one of the replacements, uh, and that was one of the challenges for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, when you have a pole or a grate or just some, something where, you know, somebody in a wheelchair might be, it's just not good. So yeah, that's something that came up early on and that's something where we have to. So.
Okay. All right. I have one more crossing thing, then I wanna add something else. So keep going north. There is a fence line there that's kind of right on the darker purple property line on the west side or the upper part of the image. Um, some nice person drove through the fence and knocked out some power.
Not in the right spot, though.
Not in the right spot, right. So who owns that fence? Is that the district or is that a county fence sitting on the property line?
Where the pointer is?
Yes, sir. Yep.
I believe that's the. Oh.
Uh, it goes from there south essentially, yeah, going to your left.
So as far as I know, here it's the school that owns it. Uh, I don't know what happens beyond this, this black line. Uh, I will say this, the school is one of the stakeholders that we have talked to and we told them we have this idea, uh, to, you know, put people on the trail so they could, you know, keep going north, choose a, should they choose to do so. Uh, but I don't have an answer to who wants the, the fence at this location.
Okay. And just to clarify, I do know this is one of the pedestrian crossings that, um, has changed slightly from the layout. It actually kind of jogs the north and that is actually to make the, the ramp because it's a longer grade, so.
That was another question, that there's probably a couple foot drop there in six feet or eight feet.
Yeah, so I think it actually diagonals to the north. But yeah, there'll be a chunk of fence that will be removed as part of the project.
Yeah.
That, uh, that, that original installation of that pathway, uh, in that location, I believe that's actually on the school district property and not on right of way. So there must be some kind of, um, agreement with the, between whomever and the school district. It would have been nice at that time to probably have moved the fence to the west so that the pathway was accessible to pedestrians across that whole section there. But not part of this project to do that, other than the connections.
I mean, if we're going through there and we're, we're opening the fence to, to have that trail, it's not a big deal for me to ask, who owns this fence and can, what can we do to take care of this?
They seem to be hanging on to repairing that fence. I'm wondering if there's a bigger plan that should be discussed with them.
Yeah, we can reach out. I, I know it's the school district. When we, when, uh, the, that council came through a few years ago, that was a similar issue, I guess. We dealt with the fence, so we, we can certainly reach out to see if there's a need for that fence, um.
Or if they have plan, I don't, they had time to repair it theoretically, where, where it wasn't frozen and whatever. And they have not, so I don't know if there's some bigger plan. They say, hey, we know the county's gonna do this work, we're gonna do X, Y, or Z now, or if it's just neglected.
Sure. Yeah, we, we can, we can check into that.
Has it been knocked down for a while?
Yeah, since last fall, at least. Um, I, I have, you go ahead. I'll be quiet for a little while.
No, in, in this, actually, I think I would, um, defer to Councilmember Etten and Mayor Rowe because they live close to this neighborhood and, and go through this neighborhood all the time and, and Councilmember Schroeder, not far. But back to where we were at the Beedale Club, um, to the south of this. The concern I had was, um, often I will bike up in that steep grade at the Beedale Club from, it is a steep grade and I'm concerned about safety, especially coming from the south. It's really hard to see oncoming. And I realize we're hoping to, um, slow traffic down. But visibility in that area is very rough. And I'm just wondering, you know, are we leveling? Are we changing the grade of this road when we're doing the Milonobrally? Are we just gonna keep it? Because it's kind of, if you go fast late at night, it's a, it's a, it's a thrill ride. And so I, it can be, I'm just concerned about there, it's not a common place where someone's gonna expect a crossing. Are they gonna adhere to the crossing and would people actually be able to cross safely at that location?
Maybe another way to say it is, is there a standard for how close you can have those crossings to the crest of the hill, given the geometry of that area?
Right, yeah, it's, it's usually, it's known as a vertical curve, uh, and there's a, all sorts of fun equations you could do, uh, you know, to determine what the speed at that road should be when you're designing it. So as, trying to see, so you're going northbound on, on the right lane on your, your bike?
Um, you could come out from the bike path, um, just to the east of the Beedale Club. It comes right out into that parking lot. So when you get to the top of that, then generally we're crossing, um, to the west side of that street to get on the bike pa, or to get on the path.
Right.
And head, you know, up to B. And so in that equation, I just know with two adults getting across, it's hard to see what's happening south of that intersection.
Right.
Um, and so it's not always gonna be two adults. I think what we hear over and over again is people concerned about their children safely crossing in this area. And if there's not a, you know, if there's not a light that's stopping people or what's gonna get people to slow down enough to make, feel like a parent could say a child could safely cross there.
Um, there will be a s- speed reduction as part of this project. Um, I mean, and there's the geo- geometric changes that you all know about now, but there's also the, the signage. Um, we've all heard that signage alone doesn't do much, but in this case, it's going along with the project itself. It's, we figured it was a good opportunity and we don't have to go through the whole MINDA process to get a speed reduction and we can just kind of implement that. So, but as far as the change of the vertical curve, that's, I don't anticipate that changing. There's less conflict, obviously, you know, there's three lanes as opposed to four lanes. So there's, it's a better condition, but it's, it's not a perfect condition. And I wouldn't claim that to be the case.
Just in relation to the, the mid-block crossings that we're adding, are those going to have any kind of flashing indicators with push buttons to activate or anything like?
No, it's, it's, it's just a pedestrian.
Static.
Right, okay.
Just sign.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Red, can you add to your?
Can you, you mentioned that there were gonna be upgrades to the bus stop spaces. Can you talk about what those will be? And you said those, some will have that and some won't. Thinking about this Roseville portion, what is gonna happen? Then again, very specifically about these segments that go into people's yards, what's gonna happen there? Are we creating a, uh, concrete pad? Is there a bench? Um, anything like that or is it just there? Because right now it's a yard, no sidewalk, which was stopped.
Now, we're, uh, we're implementing a, a new place, a new pad essentially. There's not gonna be any shelters. Um, I don't believe, no, there isn't.
And there will be a level concrete pad.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that is an improvement.
That was a big ask from, not a big ask, but it was a one that I heard a lot from the public that is like, you know, you got people standing in the mud, you got people standing in the snow. And I was like, okay, like we'll, we'll talk to them in transit and then we'll, we'll push it down. So, yeah, absolutely. There's, uh, some consolidation and that was, I think that transit takes it as an opportunity to see where there's underutilization of their stops. Uh, in this case, they took that opportunity and they said, hey, can you replace these and this, that and the other.
Sure.
Will those also be ADA accessible?
I, yeah.
So that we need ramps and other things to get to that pad, because right now they are on the side of the.
But it's, it'd be accessible to the street? And that's, I mean, they're not accessible to sidewalks, so someone coming onto the street.
Of the east.
Right. Both sides, some, some spots there, so.
That's the, the BRT, I believe, is accessible to the sidewalks, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be on the sidewalk. But yeah, if there's a, there's not a pathway on the, the, the east side of the road, it's, it is gonna serve a curb cut to the street, not, there's nothing rear facing.
That's true, also at Dale Court.
Yeah.
So on the, on the west side of Dale Court, it's just, it's just a yard with a sign in it. So, yeah, okay. I, I would like to, because I'm, I'm not always nice right now, but I would like to note, I really appreciate you thinking ahead and talking about working with the folks on Rice Street. That's further, uh, in St. Paul and, and south, but, um, appreciate that you're trying to make that happen because that, those are, there really is another option, right? Um, and then there's no mid-intersection thing to take. It's either Dale Street or Rice Street. Um, so thank you for thinking about that.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So Councilmember Schroeder, we, we didn't know your hand was up because you were still facing the other screen, but, uh, we do see that you have a question or comment.
Well, thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak. Um, first of all, um, Councilmember Etten hit, one of the big points I had was that crossing by Beedale Club, that, that just didn't seem to make as much sense to me. So thank you for bringing that up. And then also, um, I was gonna question what the, um, accidents looked like. And I was glad to see that there was some information brought forward on that. And the, the question is, will we get information showing the reduction then at once this is done?
Yes, but it takes a little bit. It takes, it takes a little bit. Uh, so for example, um, the other location that, locations that I took a look at, obviously the, the pre-time, the three years, we have that. We have the, was there before. And the post, some of them didn't have the full three years. So I had to look at a year and a half, whatever it was. And obviously you have to reduce that to compare to the before, apples to apples. You can't just say, oh, there was less here, but there was less months. It's like, no, that's not how it works. It's on a per-year basis. So eventually, yes, that's a, that's a bit of a, a project that I have updated maybe twice a year on our four to threes. I have either do it myself or I have somebody else updated, uh, with our, with our information that we have access to.
Great. And then what is the speed limit gonna be on, um, on the, that area?
So I believe the St. Paul portion will be twenty-five because it's currently thirty. And the, it's, it's a five mile an hour reduction on both ends. And the Roseville portion will be thirty-five because it's currently forty, right?
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
One final question I note in the, in the closer up looks at the plans, it doesn't appear that there's any, uh, right turn lanes. For instance, at Beedale or other places.
Right.
Is it gonna be combination through and right and then left, dedicated left? And from a safety point of view, you don't see issues with that generally?
No. Um, if, if anything, um, it allows for different signal patterns to be ran when there's three against three lanes as opposed to two on two.
Okay.
Uh, and if you think about it the way it's working now, if, if you have two lanes and you've got people waiting to turn left and somebody waiting to turn right, you're stuck behind. So, uh, that was a question that, that came up as well. And, and the impression that people get usually, and it, and it's, it makes sense that to people, for people to think this way, it's like, well, one less lane. It's gonna be congestion. It's like, no, it actually moves pretty, a little bit slower, but pretty comfortably uh, once these, uh, four to threes are implemented.
Well, I think there's no question that Dale Street is a pretty, pretty significant commuter route in, through our community. Uh, so, you know, the, the peak times that you would expect a lot of traffic there is definitely a lot of traffic. So it will be interesting to see and I'm sure it's gonna be a bit of an iterative process to get the signal timing right and all of that, but, uh.
Yeah, I talked to people who've had vehicles end up in their front lawn. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, go do that in Wisconsin.
Certainly, at least not in Ramsey County or Roseville.
Well, no, I, I'm, I'm saying like eventually a lot of that be weeded out. Uh, you know, initially there's gonna be probably some, some growing pains in the first couple of months. People are just, why is it so slow or why is it doing this? And then that's, uh, time when we're also paying a lot of closer tech attention for the fine tuning of the signals and, you know, what needs to be done, where are the backups, all that stuff.
Anecdotally, I can say that on the Larbinder conversion between Rice and Dale, um, I noticed almost right away that speeds seemed to be significantly down. And I found myself not even getting up to the posted speed. So I, I think there is some, some truth to what you're saying there.
You just can't let them know that you're making them slow down. Because once they know, they get really mad.
I didn't notice until it was too late. No, Councilmember.
You, you brought up two things, Mayor. Could we go back north? Because I think this is a, a huge positive improvement. The lanes underneath Highway thirty-six, I think are gonna be a better situation. Could you talk about how those are changing, please?
So I believe currently, um, the left lane doesn't extend the whole way.
Right now, actually, that is a, that is actually, that is a three-lane section. You're actually expanding it out here.
Okay, apologies. So yeah, I, I do believe, um, sorry, I haven't looked at this section in a little bit. But there will be some changes to the ramps from MINDA. They have a project that's doing a Milonobrally along all the ramps. You know about this, obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, the functionality, you get more storage for the left turning lanes.
That's, I think, the big improvement. You get a full, full storage, weight, weight turn there instead of half and half, which creates frequently cars stopping in the, in the through lanes and stuff like that.
Yeah, that spillage is, is a bane of traffic.
I think that's a nice improvement.
Yeah.
And then you, you brought up signal timing. I think I told you last summer how much I don't like the timing here. If I get through both of those lights with a green, or maybe I told you, I go and buy a lottery ticket. It is so, that is so poorly timed and timed with Dale Street that I hope that you will work with MINDA to think about how can all of this kind of allow a little better flow. The traffic is tough up to thirty-six, uh, and then down into St. Paul. That's where that, I think if we did traffic counts, there's a significant drop off north of thirty-six. Like coming up to that point and those lights, uh, as people access thirty-six is where we really need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to work together and make the timing work together better.
Yeah, we're coordinating with their project because obviously we're gonna be in the area, so we wanna make sure we play nice and nice.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strawn?
I have a question about the bike lane on the, um, the west side from Cope to thirty-six, right where you are. It just goes away. Um, so.
What do you mean?
Well, it.
The southbound?
Yeah, headed southbound there. You get two lanes, a turning lane and a through lane, and there's no blue in there. So it's a, there is a path there. Are you shunting them off to the path at that point? Just trying to think of, safety-wise, what you're, what's happening, because it's a big section where there's just no bike lane.
No bike lane and probably a heavy right turn. So I, I can't tell you that I specifically looked at this section and that I have, but just looking at it right now and the way it looks, I, I would talk to my designer and, and I'm, I'm gonna say it's probably the heavy right turn movement. Uh, we're not opposed to having the bike lane and the right turn lane shared, uh, but in this case, if there's, it looks like there's a trail. Um, I, I, I believe that. I could follow up with you.
I think, I just think it'd be important, as a biker, it's really nice to know where you're supposed to head. And so having it be intentional about signage, maybe sending you over to that. Just if you're, if you're unfamiliar with the area and you have kids with you biking, that's a long stretch to not have a dedicated pathway. Where you just, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of intersections in Roseville like this where all of a sudden your bike path just disappears and you're just kind of on your own. And then also looking on the east side of that intersection, the way it is now, it's, it's just kind of a right roll, probably a roll and go, um, where people don't necessarily stop because it rolls, it curves around there guaranteed. And so another unsafe place to be on a bike, um, you know, when you bring them to the stop, at least it's safer. They actually look, as someone who's had my son hit by a car at an intersection like this up at, uh, Lexington, um, just concerned that as, that's a school right there. Like where are we, how are we making sure kids are safely, if we're encouraging them to bike, that they're actually gonna get to where they need to be safe? Or headed to Central Park, which is just north of here. But right now, as it is, those, and then I also wanted to comment on south of thirty-six. Similar, especially on the east side, that is a pretty weird intersection because there's that service road and then there's the entrance road there. And again, your bike lane disappears. And so either it needs to be signed, you know, like labeled all the way through there so people know. But that, that service lane is hard to see. People don't expect there to be traffic, so when there is, it is a big surprise. And so, again, another school to the south there. So I just know so many parents who won't let their children bike and this helps, but does it? I wanna make sure the parent could safely feel like their kid is getting to where they need to be. So either we remove the bike lanes, especially on the west side of that intersection and keep them. So either we remove the bike lanes, especially on the west side of that intersection, and keep them on the path, or we sign it better, so that there's a chance that they can get there safely. But I just think, right now, it's confusing, because there's a bike lane and a path, and you lose it for a while, and then it comes back, and I think either one or nothing, you know, either one solid planned-out one is probably the better plan than trying to have these two that are competing for, people don't know where to be.
That's a great comment, and I'll follow up. Uh, it's possible that that has been updated as well, um, there's, like I said, there's a few changes from what's on the website, uh, but, yeah, I'll.
I mean, but there's three schools on that intersection, so we just absolutely need to make sure that if a parent puts their kid, well, and there's one just up the street to four within, you know, a short period there, we, we gotta make sure that parents feel like we've thought about their safety, and if we let their kid be on a bike.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, in that case, it might be better to get people off onto the pathway at level instead of at Cope, so they have more anticipation time.
Yeah, and my experience has been most, mostly, parents and children typically use the off-road pathways, not the on-road pathways, that's typically for your commuters. Not that kids couldn't use it, but, um, the fact we have the off-road pathway, I think that's what most kids and students would be utilizing. Granted, we only do have it on the east, or the, the west side, not on the east side.
It, it does look like it has a trail-ish feel, as opposed to a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I know that's a solid.
There's still a fair amount of miscommunication and misunderstanding about who is able to be on those paths, and who is not. Um, as someone who bikes, I'm regularly told that I'm not allowed to be there, so, you know, I just, and also if someone has an e-bike, they're not driving forty, but they're not driving.
Ten.
Six, eight, so, making sure that, I just think, either all or nothing, I think right now, as it is, there's a number of sections there that I find confusing.
That's a good comment, I appreciate it.
Questions or comments on the proposed project?
Right, I'll ask about the sidewalk at, at Beale. Uh, cause I, I think that's an interesting distinction, but, uh, we're just so far into the estimate and the process, and I'm sure you know how it works, but I, I don't want you to feel like I just.
Reduce your salary, to you.
That's, that sounds like a small change order.
It'll be a community, uh, concrete board, we'll all do it together.
There you go. Beale Club activity, right?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you again for being here this evening, and, and subjecting yourself to our, to our critiques, but, uh, hopefully it makes for a better project in the end, and that everybody can be happier, and, and likewise, uh, you know, at some point in the future, when there is funding available, and we can do a complete, uh, east-side, uh, facility off-road, that we can get to that point, but I understand that this was meant to be a, within-the-curbs kind of project, and so that doesn't afford as many opportunities to, to do the grand plan.
There, just a quick comment, there are, there is another Dale project for next year, uh, that's south of ninety-four. Uh, so, when you Google this one, uh, just Google safety conversion, the website's there, my email is there, phone number. If I don't answer, I'll call you back the next day, or the day of, so.
Do you have the opportunity for people to sign up to get emails and updates on the project at that site?
Delivery, yes.
Great.
And I hear about residents that way quite a bit, too.
Yeah, that's an excellent tool for people, I know that MINDOT does that as well, and it's a wonderful opportunity to, to know what's going on with the project, cause you get that email on Friday that says, uh, there's a weekend closure coming.
Yeah.
So, great.
So, uh, just a quick comment, uh, related to this, uh, three-lane conversion, the county is doing a study on the County Road C four-to-three lane conversion, so that project is kicking off, and I believe there'll be some open houses here later this month, or it might be in April, so just, that is just starting this process, so, uh, more to come on that, so.
Can you speak of which section of C is that from here, east?
From Lexington all the way to thirty-five E.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you again.
You're very welcome.
Great. Thank you. That then brings us to our second business item this evening, which is to consider, uh, approving an ordinance amending, uh, city commission's scope duties and functions broadly. Um, and I don't know if you wanna, again, Councilmember Schroeder up on the big screen now that we're done with presentations, but, see if we can do that. Uh, with that, um, I believe, um, Olson, are you introducing this item for us, or is it to the, the committee members, or?
Whatever you would prefer, Mayor, I'm happy to give a, a quick overview, and then you can go into discussion, and others can chime in. Um, so, at the, at the, um, meeting in February, there was, uh, ordinance that was drafted, there were a couple of changes that were, um, brought up at that meeting. Uh, I know our city attorney has worked diligently on this, getting this all pulled together as well. Couple of the changes, um, that are, should be noted include the, um, language regarding commission meetings to be canceled, um, that they should be planned to be held monthly unless the staff liaison and commission chair, um, determine that there's no business to take up at that meeting. And another change was the removal of the language regarding the comprehensive plan out of this chapter, and putting that into the zoning code, chapter ten. The planning commission is going to have a public hearing regarding that amendment at its April meeting. And then, um, the council could then consider that amendment at the April twenty-third meeting as well. Um, there is in your packet, uh, updated ordinance, as well as an ordinance summary, um, and, uh, it, uh, it should be noted that the, um, draft commission scope for the H R I C was not included in that updated ordinance, as of right now, given the conversations that have been made at the meetings. With that, I'll send a question.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Olson, um, and it should be noted also that we're probably okay taking that part out of chapter two right now, as, as it relates to the comp plan, um, because.
I can't hear you guys.
On the comp plan. So you can't hear us.
Sorry, Rob.
I can't, you're, you're, I can't hear you guys.
Sorry, Rob, and we're just moving to the.
There we go, there we go, I can hear you dial in.
There's a transition on monitors here.
Yeah, just bear with us for a second here.
But anyways, I was saying that the, the, um, city is not undergoing a comprehensive plan update, uh, between now and when we might be considering that change to the land use code language, so it's okay, I would think, to take out that language out of this section as part of this action, and then we can follow up with that other action, uh, later on the land use side, so just wanted to note that. I don't know how much of that, uh, Councilmember Schroeder may have heard.
It's all struck through.
Yeah, no, I was just noting that, that it was in fact struck through, and so we would be taking action potentially on that, and noting that that's probably not a concern. Have you been able to hear us recently, Councilmember Schroeder?
Um, I can hear you now.
Okay, did you hear the discussion about the, the okayness of taking the language out of this chapter on the land use part, because we won't be doing any land use type activities related to that by the time we get things, uh, updated on the planning commission side?
Um, I only heard the first part, but thank you for summarizing it.
Okay. All right. Do you wanna make sure that we have, uh, have everybody fully participating in the meeting? Um, it seems to be the case right now, um, so, I'll first turn it over to council members for feedback to, uh, staff or the attorney in terms of questions related to the language as it's presented before us, are there questions or feedback from council members at this time? Councilmember Strong.
Well, first of all, I'd really like to say thank you to councilmembers Etten and Schroeder, this looks so much better than anything that we've seen, and I appreciate your work. Well, it, it looks great, and I really, I, I don't think we can appreciate you enough for doing that, because compared to what we've brought into it, it, it's amazing, so thank you so much. Um, I did ask this question of, um, Assistant City Manager Olson earlier, um, wondering, we have had the requirement of commissioners to request of them to have a background study, and.
A check.
A background check, sorry.
Yeah.
My chairperson, um, a background check, and, and then there are some instances when that is, um, could potentially disqualify for someone. I don't see any reference to any of that in this, is there a need for it to be a part of this, where people are, should it be part of an ethics part? It just is not mentioned at any point in here, and is it something that we need to have a continued use of? After speaking with, uh, city manager, or Assistant City Manager Olson, the list of things that someone would be prevented, at least the way that the background check is run that we do now, are very minimal, um, and I just know that as we, really hard for equity's sake to bring more people back into the public participation, is that something that we need to still continue to have? But I just wondered if at some point, is it, is it germane to have that mentioned in any of these documents? Or is it separate in the ethics, but I don't know, just at no point is it mentioned, and I know that it's something that's, um, asked of each commission applicant.
So Ms. Olson, maybe if you can talk to how commissioners or commission candidates are become aware of the fact that we do background checks?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, we do have a, uh, administrative policy that covers this, that explicitly lays out that city commission members are, um, required to undergo a criminal background check through our process. Commissioners, uh, had a conversation today with our volunteer manager, and we don't actually inform commissioners until they've been appointed, which I think, to Councilmember Strong's point, um, should happen sooner in the process. Um, so after commissioners are appointed, they are requested to fill out something that's called a Tennyson form, giving us authorization to do it, um, and then we use a third-party vendor that runs our background checks, and it comes back, and we look at them, and there's very few things that I can even imagine that would disqualify somebody, but, um, if it's a conversation we wanna have, I think it's one that can be brought up and talked about, if you wanna continue that, or if you want to include it in a city code, or.
Certainly, right now, it's not being proposed to be in the code, although you're asking, Councilmember.
I'm, I'm not necessarily asking.
Just whether it should be.
Whether it should be, so this may be more of a question for, um, attorney attorney, but I think, I think it's really important that we are honest with people, because we wanna intentionally embarrass someone who maybe knows that they would have passed a background study, and have them go through the whole process and not, not be able to be appointed. Um, uh, but then just also thinking of our racial equity toolkit, realizing that people of color are more likely to have, you know, have had, um, opportunities to interact with the law, and of course, it would not indicate things that they were not, um, actually penalized for, but, or if they've served their time, they wouldn't maybe, I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's a, if a ongoing reasonable explanation why we should have that, and if so, if it should be part of this, if we're requiring it of people. And if not here, where are we making sure people know that that's an opportu, that's something that they may be subjected to?
I think it makes sense to try to communicate that earlier in the process to people, that they may be subjected to it. I, I think that the institution of the background checks related to, uh, commissioners who may be working with young people, minors, um, and of course, now that we have all of our commissions eligible to have youth commissioners, that then expanded it beyond initially those that did, or had the, like Parks Rec, that maybe had an opportunity to work with young people at park events and things like that. Um, and so that's primarily what the, what the driving factor was in having background checks, was that notion of people working with young people, and whether there was anything in the background that would indicate that that's not a good idea. I don't think we were looking at any other aspect of, um, people's background as far as why, you know, we do the checks. Obviously, we probably get more information than is relevant to that particular data point, um, but not something that's necessarily taken into consideration as we, as we bring people on board. I don't know that I, I feel that it ought to be in the code, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we can, need to continue to be doing it per se, but I think we need to have more conversation about that, if that's our, our pathway, um, so that's just my thoughts, I don't know, I saw your hand up, Councilmember, hadn't before.
Well, I would generally agree with what you said, um, about why it is a requirement in there, I think it's a very good point, that if we're gonna do it, then it should be part of the application process somehow, not the, oh, you've been appointed here, filled this Tennyson form, and you may not, you know, that, that's an awkward point, um, so I would agree with that, I think that's, uh, apparently administrative function that I, I would not put here, but we could certainly talk more about how we feel about it, and how, what level or what point does that disqualify someone, right?
Yeah, in what?
You got a petty misdemeanor, you know, for something you did twenty years, is that, is that something?
Yeah, and I know that if it's, if it's specifically around protection of a youth commissioner, then obviously it's a fine, um, there's a narrow, um, path of which it would be, and I also thought that it maybe could live in the ethics requirements, is that, you know, that it maybe wouldn't need to be spelled out specifically in here, but I just thought, as we're having this conversation about the changes, that we at least address it, because I don't think a lot of people probably know that that's even part of the process, and so I think, you know, what has to be committed to code, I don't know, and that's why I kinda wanted to see what your thoughts were on where this would live, um, to be fair, and to be germane to what we're asking the people.
Councilmember Strong, you certainly can put it in your code, if you wish, um, I don't think that that's required. Where it lives currently in the city policy is with the requirement for city employees to have a background check, so it is kind of a common sense place for it to be. And I, like I said, I don't think that it's required to be in the code, if you wanted to put it in the code to make it clear, or maybe publicize it better, although I don't know how many people read the codes, but maybe that, maybe the few that read it would see it there. Um, that's certainly something that you could do, there's no reason that you, that you can't.
Do we ask background checks of our volunteers?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Strong, we do for certain volunteers, um, volunteers that work with vulnerable populations, or if they are working with cash, which at this time, I don't think we have anybody working with cash, but if they are working with, um, vulnerable populations, so for example, volunteers that may be alone at the Harriet Alexander Nature Center would undergo a background check. And because we use a third party, um, we are required by law to follow some of those, um, Fair Credit Reporting Act laws under, under this, um, which requires that the background check has to, when you look at it, if you're gonna disqualify somebody, that it has to be very specific to the, the job or the duty that they're doing, um, and follow those processes. So, at this time, we have very few volunteers outside of the city commissioners that undergo background checks.
And the volunteer requirement also is part of that same policy for, okay. When we request background checks, is, is it just a generalized product that comes out, or is it specific to only those certain areas that we're concerned about?
Um, Mayor, councilmembers, it is a complete criminal background check, so we see everything from all fifty states, and, um, it also includes the driver's license check, and, um, some, um, sexual predator lists, and there's a, a list of things that the, the background check includes.
Right, I see that Councilmember Schroeder has her hand up, but I do wanna just check one thing with the attorney. I'm presuming that that information is not public data, not accessible to, dare request from members of the public?
Correct.
Okay, so we do protect people's information in that regard when we do conduct those types of background checks?
Yes, and when we're done with this meeting, I'll talk to, uh, Ms. Olson about what we do with that paper when we're done looking at it. We don't have paper.
Yes, I think, um, uh, Councilmember Strong made a really good point about that we should make this, uh, known to people, and the application level, because the, I, I think that's, that could be unpleasant surprise for some people, just even if they don't have anything, um, that's in the background, that's a problem. It's, it still can be, you know, I think, a little surprising, and not in a good way for people, so I like that idea of trying to make that, um, known ahead of time. And, um, I know it's important that, it's, it's that balance, I know between, you know, the city would be liable if we had people on the, uh, commissions that we didn't check for certain things, especially if they're dealing with children, or a situation with that, so I know trying to make sure, um, we, we, we do that, but do it very, um, carefully, and, and so, um, that the reasons we would not let someone on the commission would be, I think, narrow, but we, I think from a liability standpoint, I think we'd still have to do it if they're dealing with children particularly, um, yeah, it's, 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 it's a balancing act, I think, so, yeah.
Councilmember Graff.
I pretty much agree with all of those things, I don't wanna really see it go into the code, I think it's, uh, letting people know earlier on. I know when I applied to commissions, it was a surprise, because they did not do that in Falcon Heights when I was back in that city, and, and so you're accepted, and then they say, oh, and you're gonna do a background check, and yes, I know I didn't have anything in there, but it's like, oh, that's interesting. Um, so let people know earlier on, um, and also I think we need to be clear to them that it is. And also, I think we need to be clear to them that it is not, you know, it has to be a pretty high level that affects them on the type of work they're doing, it's not...
And we're only looking at particular aspects, I think we should be clear about that.
There could be a check mark people do as part of the online application process, that if you are appointed, they do a background check, and here are the parameters for how that could affect, right? There's something along the line.
And I understand that.
Yeah, a check mark, or something that says, I understand that, or that's what I'd like to see.
I think it would be good, because I think some people just, you know, maybe they have something, they're just embarrassed, they don't want anyone to know about it. It may not impact their ability to be on there, but, you know, if you just, you just had your three DWIs in the last year, you don't maybe want the, anybody to know, even if it's not written on paper.
If it was 10 years ago, you know, somebody might just feel awkward about it. So it's good to have, they could have a conversation with Ms. Olson or whoever's the point person.
And it probably also is good to reiterate it in the Commissioner handbook information as well, besides sort of that upfront application process.
And then be clear about what the point is, you know, why, you know, that we want to make sure people have safe interactions with youth, and obviously, we'd love to have more youth commissioners, but we can ask for the city. I thought it was actually surprising that as councilmembers, we are not asked to do that, so.
Maybe we should. Add it to the list.
Could change the code.
Unfortunately, I don't think that that's something that can disqualify somebody from having been elected necessarily.
No, I don't think so. I, but I think the only thing is maybe if it's included in the staff, since it very explicitly says in all of these things that they are not paid, then that we would extend that same expectation of a volunteer commissioner that we would of staff, or, you know, just somehow bridge the gap with a couple of words, if we're putting it as a staff expectation, that when they're not necessarily paid, that the expectation wouldn't be made.
Fairly clear, so no change to the code in that regard this evening. Other questions or feedback on the proposed code language? Councilmember Ratten?
I'm looking at the first page of the amended code, so attachment to first page at the bottom, letter D, talks about advisory commissions and commission members will engage with the local community and service community liaisons and resources for issues, ideas, and proposals related to the commission's subject matter, and provide appropriate information and resources. We use resources a lot there, but I'm wondering if we would want to add something here that explicit, because I thought it was explicit in here, and it's not explicitly talks about how commissioners may initiate ideas and proposals for further consideration by their commission. I have language around that, but, yes.
I think that's in your rules of procedure.
It is, the how to do it, but I think the point that Councilmember Ratten may be making is that we, we want to maybe be a little more explicit in the code itself, as to that's one of the things that commissioners can and should be doing. And then how to do it shows up in our rules of procedure.
If they're out there as liaisons and engaging with the community, and part of the reason we ask people on commissions to bring their ideas to the table, so just being explicit about it. So I have language that is a little more fleshed out, when I just said I could read it out, see how people feel about that. So the second sentence in that letter D would be, "Commissions and commission members may initiate ideas and proposals for further consideration by their commission and the city."
That would be added at the end of what's there now?
That'd be the second sentence of D, 20101D.
And city, you mean generally like staff or council?
Well, if their commission moved it forward, then, as commissions are allowed to do, then the council would end up considering it too.
So city council then maybe, instead of just city?
I think by saying city, you said city and city council, or something?
I did not, I did not have city council there, and I don't have strong feelings.
Well, by the commission and by the city?
Yes.
I think that covers the city council. I mean, there may be things that, that commissions bring forward that may be considered and dealt with at a staff level too, so by saying the city, you're kind of covering all the bases there maybe.
Capital C.
Oh, always capital C. Does that make sense?
I don't know, had we, had we asked that they bring things forward to the city without bringing it through us first?
Well, I think the details of how it might happen can be handled outside of the code, but being explicit that it can be done makes sense to have in the code.
I have no opposition to the general idea, I was just wondering if moving it as capital C city was the correct, the correct thing, if we should say the city and the city council, or just so that it was maybe more specific, city staff and city council, I didn't know if it needed to be more fine tuned.
As to more specific, I don't know, I don't have strong feelings.
I don't either.
I don't know that our attorney does either necessarily.
Well, could you read the, the whole phrase again?
Sure can. So that second sentence would start, "Commissions and commission members may initiate ideas and proposals for further consideration by their commission and the city."
I, I mean, I, the way I would read city is kind of a royal we, so everyone involved in the city, I would read that to be a broader statement, so it would include the city council in my mind, but then also would include if it's a directive to city staff. I don't know whether you want to allow them to be directing city staff, I thought what I was recalling, well, it says for further consideration, so, you know, it, I, I don't know how much, it's, it's a fairly broad sentence, if you want it to be that broad, great, but I do read it as fairly broad, as including city, city council, city staff, and I know that city staff was something you wanted to, or I think I recall you wanting to not have council commissioners directing city staff.
Correct, I, the commissioners are advisory, but I think they're advisory to the council and the city more broadly, and to their departments. Yeah, just an example, probably is Parks Rec Commission, there are probably things that are brought up in Parks Rec discussions that Parks Rec staff handles and deals with, and maybe don't necessarily, I mean, it kind of depends on whether it's a policy that has to be adopted by the city council, or a budgetary decision that the city council has to undertake. But I think it could be, I can see where it could be staffed too, Councilmember.
An example of that would be the deer calling process, where we have handed away that authority, and that the Park Rec Commission reviews the data and makes a recommendation to staff whether to do that and how many deer to take, right? So that's an example where we have explicitly given the authority to them to do that.
Well, and something could be brought to staff, and they might have a quick answer for them, or they might say, no, that is a policy, they can ask to come to the council.
Certainly.
So I would say it could be bounced off staff.
So having the, the royal we that's broad inclusive seems to be all right, and, and I don't think it is, I wouldn't interpret that as being able to direct city staff, because I think we've established in the previous paragraphs that, that these are advisory commissions, and that they're not, they don't have the authority to act on behalf of the city, and I think B talks about that.
An advisory commission will have decision-making authority for the city, except for the deer call.
All right, so I, does the council generally feel that that type of language addition is, is appropriate?
Ms. Roderick?
I can't, I don't see, I don't see the yellow hand up there.
If we didn't hear your voice, we would think you were really there.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, well, my voice is not, not what it was before, so hopefully you can still hear me, but I don't have any objections to it.
All right, why don't we kind of hold that thought and potentially bring that in then as we take this up? Other questions or thoughts or suggestions from councilmembers? Councilmember Ratten again?
Thank you. Line one, lines 115 through 117, the section on compensation has been removed, and I don't remember that we had a discussion of removing that.
Oh, you're right.
Councilmember Ratten, I don't know that there was a discussion on removing it, but it isn't a change from the last draft.
Isn't it in 113 just above?
That's brilliant, thank you, all right. Well done.
That's the deal.
Thank you.
It's in there, it's just put in a different spot.
Well, and they were out of order, so it went 20105 to 20103, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
I didn't read it.
Thoughts or questions, suggestions? Did it have one thing? If not, just to keep things moving, under 20104, meetings and reports, starting at line 157, but specifically on line 160, this gets to the change related to the meeting timing, meeting schedule. As I recall our discussion at our last discussion, and I'm not always necessarily reliable on that, but as I recall it, I don't think we were saying that commissions have to schedule or shall schedule monthly meetings. I, I seem to remember that we, we wanted to sort of leave it open to the commissions, and, but they had to meet at least quarterly, and I, so we weren't changing that requirement. So my suggestion here, rather than the language that's proposed, saying shall schedule to meet at least monthly, it might be better to say commissions may schedule to meet as often as monthly.
Then they can always add more things, they can, if they needed an extra meeting, they could.
Right, so, so, but I guess, you know, this starts by saying that commissions set their schedule at the beginning of the year. And I think then we say, you know, they can meet as often as monthly, we're not going to restrict commissions from doing that, that they have to at least meet quarterly, which is covered by the added sentence. And then I do like the fact that we've added the language in here that was only in the planning commission area about being able to cancel a meeting, you know, rather than having it be a complicated process where the commission has to vote to cancel a meeting, that makes sense. So I, like I said, on line 160, I would just change shall to may, and at least to as often as, so where it's permissive to commissions.
Would that be a conflict if they were having smaller group breakout meetings? Or is this about full commission?
This is the full commission meetings.
Is there a reason to have the monthly piece in there, or just get rid of the extra pieces that are there?
Well, we could go back to the original language.
Commissions shall meet at least quarterly.
And leave it at that.
I, I think part of that discussion was back and forth, and how many meetings should go, and then we decided that we should just get out of the way and not change something that was working fine.
Yeah, no, we could certainly do that.
I think, I think that, that's my recollection of that thing, rather than saying they have to meet monthly, or they can only have nine meetings a month, nine meetings a year, nine months, that'd be terrible. Rather we just said, hey, do we have a problem? We don't have a problem, let's just leave the language. So for me, I would just go back, revert to commissions shall meet at least quarterly.
And then take out that last part of the sentence.
Take out schedule two, and take out monthly, so just really reverting back to that sentence as it was before.
And then on line 163, we'd have to strike out, but a commission must meet at least quarterly, because now that would be redundant.
Yeah.
How does the council feel about just reverting back to the original language there, not getting into the monthly part of it?
That's fine, we, wasn't that 161 through 163 added language underlying there?
So 161 through 163 was added language, correct?
So we wouldn't have to strike, because we would have kept that whole off?
Well, no, we would keep that in there though, because that's talking about the whole notion of canceling a meeting. But because the earlier changes took out the quarterly and put in monthly, this was, this language about quarterly was added here, so now we've got to, since we're rolling back the other change, we've got to roll back this addition.
Right. So the end of that sentence on line 164 would be the word meeting?
Correct, on 163. Anything else from councilmembers on the proposed general code language for all the commissions, with the exception of HRIC? If not, we will provide an opportunity for public comment on these general changes to the commission requirements. If anyone from the public wishes to speak to these proposed code changes, this would be an opportunity to do so, anyone from the public on the general changes. All right, seeing no one, then we'll move to council consideration. We do have the ordinance before us, we did conceivably make the change to D on page one, on line 41 essentially, and then we made the adjustments on line 160 and 163, discussed about the meeting frequency, but keeping in the language about canceling. Councilmember Ratten?
I would move this as adjusted in our discussions.
Second?
I'd second it.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ratten. I, unfortunately, I'm going to say it was seconded by Councilmember Graff, sorry, Councilmember Schroder.
It's a problem of being in the delay.
You're online, you're delayed, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we have the motion before us to adopt the ordinance with the language as amended, is everybody tracking the changes from a staff perspective and attorney perspective, so we make sure we're, when I sign it, it's the right one? All right, this has to be a roll call vote. Ms. Olson, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Mayor Row.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, that ordinance change is approved. We do also, because of the extensive nature of this, have the request to publish, to save the taxpayers' money and publish a summary in the official newspaper rather than the whole ordinance. That type of motion does require a supermajority, which in this case is four fifths of the council. Is there a motion to authorize publishing a summary of this ordinance change?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Strawn, to authorize the summary. Discussion on that motion, hearing not, I think I forgot to ask for a discussion on the previous one, but hopefully we had enough up to that point. With that, Ms. Olson, would you call the roll on this motion?
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, meeting the two-thirds requirement for publication of a summary, and I do want to just echo the thoughts that were expressed earlier by a couple of councilmembers, thanking Councilmember Ratten and Councilmember Schroder for their work on this, thanks also to Ms. Olson and our attorney, Ms. Tierney, for their work on this, going through lots of drafts back and forth, and lots of discussions I'm sure that we were not aware of, so appreciate that this is a product, I think hopefully that will get us at least a couple of years before we have to change the commission code again. With that, I believe that concludes that item. That then brings us to business item 7C, which is to discuss the specifically, the human rights inclusion engagement scope duties and functions, and pathway forward in regard to that. This is an area that we've had more specific and detailed discussion about over the last couple of opportunities that the councils had. I think that we have not yet come to a conclusion as a council, and so this is an opportunity to hopefully advance that conversation. I'm not sure from a staff perspective, Ms. Olson, if there's anything you have by way of introduction, perhaps I'll turn it over to representatives of the subcommittee once again to initiate this conversation.
Robin said she wanted to talk the whole time.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
You're muted again, you're muted, we can't. Councilmember Ratten?
All right, so this has come forward, I think the attachment kind of talks through it, but looking at some of the changes in laws, changes in our city, changes in what people would expect and want as part of what is currently in the HRIC, that it was time to take a deep look into what do we want to do for our, our future and our next steps. And I think I pointed this out a while ago in a previous meeting, one of the things that really put this to a head is just looking at the loss in membership each year, a lot of those members leaving because of great frustration with the process, with the code, with how, there's certainly as I talk to folks, frustration with the council and how things were laid out. And looking for, well, how do we do this differently, because what we have right now is not working, it's not, not a model for success, and so that's kind of the genesis of this. The subcommittee met, as we were looking at other things, but also had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Olson and our city manager, Trudgeon, and got some initial feedback that they'd gotten, and Ms. Olson can speak for herself, kind of who, the framing for who she talked to, and then I'll talk kind of the framing for who I had an opportunity to talk with so far.
True, thank you, councilmember, council, I've had conversations with past commission members, some current commission members, I spoke also with culture brokers briefly on this topic. members, some, I spoke also with culture brokers briefly on this topic. I think some of the trends that I've heard from is that there is a distinct disconnect between what the expectation is of joining the commission and what the reality is. That's kind of the standard theme that I've heard. I, I've heard a lot of different viewpoints on, on various things, but for the most part, I, I think that clear direction is really important. You've had conversations regarding the concept of human rights, whether that is something that should stay in, in the title. Commission members found, the people that I've spoken to, there was some confusion on, on that piece, whether, because it's not a commission that reports or does investigations or anything, so there was a little bit of confusion on that. I know when speaking with culture brokers, the work that they did to help us get the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan up and running, they felt that this, that a group, it could be this commission, it could be something else. A good role for that would be helping the city maintain accountability and progress on the racial equity action plan, some of the specific tasks that are outlined in that. They also talked about aligning it with governance of making sure that, that group is, is keeping the diverse voices as part of those decisions. And then there's also been discussion about, you know, the role of, of the commission being a conduit for somebody who can connect them to different services. That's something that we've heard as well. But I think that, as I mentioned, the main theme of what I've heard is really, there has to be understanding and clear direction around the purpose of the group that is doing the work and, and make sure that it is communicated clearly. So that, that's kind of the, the feedback that I've heard so far.
And then I've had an opportunity to speak with several current members and a couple of past members and another diverse leaders in our city, thinking about what, what is their feedback, and I think it absolutely echoes this, and that one of the biggest things is having that clear focus and what's, what's really important for our city. And I've kind of included that in here. What I kept hearing is, what are we doing, looking at, how do we make sure that the city's moving forward with equity and inclusion? And then the conversation, really, for me to start thinking about that was based on the feedback from culture brokers that Ms. Olson had relayed to us, saying, hey, here's an area, and I would, I would say that without an equity inclusion manager right now, we aren't getting the updates, we aren't, we aren't reviewing it as we look at how kind of, what kind of updates we want to do in the next year or two, who would help usher that through? And thinking about that as a very specific target for the future, I think is critical to what we're doing and critical to the interests of diverse members of our community. Yeah, I have lots I can say, but I don't need to read this to folks, so.
Other thoughts from councilmembers? Now, this is kind of our first chance to jointly discuss what we've heard, both in the joint discussion that we had with members of the commission, which we really appreciate. And I also just want to note and thank staff for including in the bench handout some of the materials, including the existing code as it stands now for the HRIC, as well as the language that was proposed by the members of the commission, thoughtfully so and, and discussed at the joint discussion we had with them at a previous meeting, as well as some of the minutes from, from those discussions, just to help us refresh our, our conversations. Sorry, it was a bench handout, so you may not have had it early enough to really be able to take it all into account, but I, I think it's helpful to have that as part of the, of the conversation. So I don't have more to say maybe in regard to some of those things as part of our discussion, but I do want to certainly let other members of the council speak first, so councilmember Schroeder, has your hand up?
I guess, you know, a couple of things I just wanted to, you know, the, if you look, recall looking back at the minutes and reflecting on it, our environment has changed quite a bit since the, you know, originally we had the two groups, brought them together, and what was going on then is very different from now. We have a whole different, I think almost, culture happening, you know, with our DEI manager and all this other things going on. And, and the main, I wanted to remind people that commissions are established for method for citizen input and our advisory to the city council. And so we want to remember that that's also part of, if you have a commission, you know, maybe we need to think about this almost in a bigger way, because if you, if you look at the proposal or what was written there, something to consider is, is there another way to do this other than just a, a commission? Do you do something like the MAC, you know, and have that, you know, work on it like that? So, I mean, again, I, my thought is, we should think about it maybe a little broader than just, how do we redefine the commission versus what is the work we want to have done and what would be the most effective way to do it? So I just wanted to point that out. And again, it needs to be something that, you know, people want to get passionate about, but then it also needs to be beneficial for the, you know, the citizens in the city as well. So I think, you know, with all the feedback coming, what, what's, how things are now just is not working and it's, there's just so many changes, I'm not surprised people are confused, we're all confused. I mean, our, our council, that, we all have different ideas what this commission was supposed to do. So I like the idea that we're going to try to clarify this and come up with a, a way that would be very helpful for the city and the council, as well as give people some worthwhile work. And on top of that, give us another, another way to support our DEI work. So that's kind of, I kind of like to see it go towards that direction, to maybe concentrate in that area versus trying to go out and, and help human rights in general. Like, I don't, you know, I know that was one area I was uncomfortable with, where they would talk to people about if they had issues with human rights and, and then, you know, especially if it was against the city, which we know didn't seem quite right to fit there. So, and I think Commissioner Strong mentioned it the, in some of the minutes about, why do we have human rights even in the title if that's not what they're going to do? Because I think it does confuse people on that side of it. So anyways, those are just some, some thoughts I had.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, councilmember Schroeder. Other thoughts, councilmember Graff?
I come at that from a little different perspective, I think, because I've been involved in this work for, oh, since nineteen eighty-nine. And so I do remember when we actually referred cases to the state and it was a human rights issue. I also look at the, the commission as something that declares to people that we are a welcoming inclusive community. If you get rid of a commission like this, the signal to, to people that are marginalized is that we don't care about you. Now, whether that's your intent or not doesn't matter, but that will be the message that's sent out. And there are always people that are marginalized. Right now, we've made great strides, but everybody's not there. The group right here is pretty homogenous, so you have to think about how other people think about it, people that aren't there. I'd say with the attacks on transgender people now, we have to be very careful about making these changes that make them feel excluded. So I just wanted to put that out there, because when we're making these changes, we need to think about that aspect.
Councilmember Strong?
Thank you for sharing that, councilmember Graff. I think that conversation we had is, during the meeting, I had pulled up the state human rights commission's page and I think focused on the fact that it says they are investigating and protecting civil rights, but also part of the need or focus of why you would have a local human rights commission is to promote equity and inclusion. And I think it would be, it would be sad for us to remove our name on this list of cities within Minnesota that have human rights commissions, for us to pull our name off of that. I think it would send a segment to people that we don't want to have. But I also think it's good that we, we try to bring that focus around. To me, it's almost as we look into the DEI piece, there's that B in sometimes in diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And what does it mean to belong? And there's always going to be, be people who we are going to identify as people who don't belong. You know, there's many situations within my own city that I love where I don't feel like I belong. I walk in and go, I didn't know a soul there, this isn't my crowd, I don't know any of these people, these people, and I felt like when I walked in, they didn't feel like I belonged there either. And that's me. So there are many people who experience that on a daily basis. And so I think, I think reframing what the focus is, I think you can still be a human rights commission without being investigating human rights violations. But I do think that really, everybody wants to understand what it is that we want from them. I, I bring it back up again, I really appreciate in our city minutes, when it says racial impact, and I want to see, and I don't know why we don't task our, this commission with looking at things that are coming forward, with helping us look at it from a racial impact. We can task that with our new DEI manager, but again, they're one person. If we could task that to a commission who can look at it from nine different viewpoints and say, but what about, but what about, I feel like we would bring all of those ideas, and then we could really say, instead of saying no racial impact expected, well, who, by who? Did we really take just that point and feed it through the SRE and feed it through our racial equity toolkit and really have a conscious decision about whether or not it would? And there will always be things we miss, but that's why we sit here today. We all think, I kind of think we're the stronger for our commission, our whole council, because we all think about different aspects of things, and each one of us brings different questions, the other one does not. And I think we have to look at that as, so then I think we just have to help frame what they do focus on. But I would really like to see their work have something to do with looking at our policies, our ordinances and things, where they really help look at it from that equity and inclusion lens and say, where does that take us? And maybe that's not as much in the community as they would like to be, maybe that's an offshoot of helping us, but if we're, we're here to devise ordinances and policies that shape and guide our city, then I feel like if they're a commission that advises us, that should be part of what they do, is they're shaping and guiding our policy from that lens.
A couple of thoughts in that regard. I think that that focuses in a similar way to what's being discussed in the memo from the subcommittee, in terms of, you know, looking at that aspect of what we do as a city. I think the, the question out there may still be, is the, is the, the confinement and the limitations of being within the commission's structure the best model for that work in, only in the sense that that seems to be something we've heard from people in terms of, you know, the constrictions of the open meeting law requirements and, and, you know, being a council appointment and a three-year term and, and some of those things that certainly a group like the MAC, which was mentioned, doesn't have. And are there benefits to being in that model as opposed to the, the formalized commission model in terms of the, the satisfaction of participants, the ability to, to have good conversations, the ability to do the work in that area, you know, without some of those constrictions that, that the commission, formal commission process has? I don't know the answer to that for sure, but I think that was one of the things that we were hearing somewhat through our feedback process, is that, that the formal commission process is a bit stifling to people who have a lot of energy and enthusiasm and creativity in the, in these areas. And so I want to be, I want to listen to that and understand that, but at the same time, think about, you know, what, what councilmember Strong said about, you know, and councilmember Graff also, about the notion of, of, you know, if something is no longer a commission, is that a demotion? Is that, how is the perception of that out there? Because I certainly want to make sure we, we get what we do right, because we've done enough of getting things wrong. And so I want to be thoughtful about that, and I want to, I want to make sure we're looking at sort of all those different perspectives and making sure we have a good understanding of that going forward. I also did want to acknowledge one of the items in the proposal from the commission about the serving as an ambassador and supporting people's interaction or connection with the city. And I think that's a very, a very good suggestion and something that I would like to see us do better as a city. And I almost think that that might be something that, that doesn't have to be a commission activity, but could be a group of interested parties can, can connect with our volunteer coordinator and/or community engagement staff and work through a process to have, have a, a group of people who are interested in doing that, who can be deployable by the city in those, those situations and really be an asset to that connection between what we do as a city and the people that we serve in the community, and sometimes that disconnect that's out there. So I, I appreciate that and I acknowledge that, and I, I think that's important not to get lost in the process. You know, I think one of the things that came out of our last discussion jointly with the, the commission members was, how do we sort of deal with that, that human rights part of it? Because we, we don't necessarily do the investigations and that sort of part of it. I think what we had in our previous code language was talking about educational programs, bringing to the council issues that seem to be rising in the community on a human rights basis, that perhaps the city needs to be doing something with or about. I think the challenge was, is that we don't, we, we, there hasn't been that clear guidance there, and it hasn't always seemed to be something that, that commissioners were, were that interested in doing. And I will say, there are groups in the community that do an excellent job, I think of Dubuque-Roseville and some of the programs they've done over the years that are excellent, and they've really pushed conversations in our community that have been great. And something I don't know that necessarily the city, with all of our official restrictions, could have done as effectively. So I think I appreciate that and, and want to make sure that we're taking full advantage of that and not trying to force a formal commission to be that necessarily either. But maybe there are ways we can do some of this, but I just want to keep, I want to keep the human rights aspect on the table as part of the discussion and figure out if there was a way to make it work and, and how. But I do think that the notion of, of being very much advisory to our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, both as we're implementing, as well as as we're thinking about adding things in the future and next steps, makes a lot of sense. I think talking about how, you know, looking at that, that impact that we, that we have, you know, our staff reports and various items that we consider as a council, you know, makes some sense to have some, some advisory role about that as well. And that's not something that was necessarily in the, in the memo, in the materials this evening. So I was glad to hear that, and that has sort of expanded my thought in, in regard to that. So those are some thoughts I've had, both coming up to tonight and over the weeks and months prior, as well as just hearing from conversation this evening. I do know councilmember Schroeder, has your hands up, and then we'll kind of do another round here. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes, I just wanted to actually blend two things that councilmembers Graff and, and Strong have both, you know, were talking about. I think we want, I, I like the idea of having them look at that impact on our statement, but I think it's too narrow. I think that impact statement needs to include the other groups that don't get heard, which is what councilmember Graff is talking about, certain other groups that aren't, their voices aren't heard. And so I think this could possibly be where this group could help expand that area, just, not just on the racial side, but the other groups as well, so then more voices are heard. And I'd say, and the one reason why I, I mentioned the MAC, and, and the mayor did a good job of talking about this, is because in the commission format, it's recorded and it's very structured. And if, in, in like that MAC format, people can have very raw conversations without having it be, and I guess I'm, I'm wondering if that format would give people who are underserved a better ability to talk and feel less intimidated? I don't know. So I mean, what, I'm, I'm just, that's, I, I do think it's important work that we need to figure out how to support, and I think that our, our DEI manager needs to be, will end up being a, a part of this as well, because you're right, it's, there's only one person there, and this, this group could act. And this, this group could actually be someone or a body that could actually help with that area. So again, I'm, I'm thinking of it more of expanding it beyond the racial side and just having it as more groups, you know, you know, the trans, the disability, you know, all, you know, you can name quite a few of them. And I'd like to see more of those voices also end up in this group to be able to add to the, the color of the conversation. So.
And before I recognize Councilmember Strong, I did have a thought in regard to Councilmember Graff about the exclusion of marginalized, marginalized people in the notion of if we sort of changed from a commission to something else. And, and just to kind of turn that back on ourselves a little bit, is our current setup actually excluding people that, that, you know, could be part of the process if it weren't for the, the, the notion of it being a formal commission with all these restrictions and things like that? So I'm not sure I know the answer, but I think there's, there's two sides to that. And so I definitely wanted to make sure and, and add that flavor to the conversation as well. Councilmember Strong.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to really challenge us as well that if we're saying that this commission or any commission is, we're asking them to bring the concerns that they hear back to us. And we're asking them to be that conduit between the public and ourselves. I think we really must be willing to entertain the options they provide. In the last couple of years since I've been on council, the HR IEC has brought forward paying commissioners. We gave that no consideration, including students from Ross High School who spend so much of their day here, but who don't live in our city borders. We did not consider that. Even the changes that were brought a couple of months ago and changing the process and the focus of the commission, and I felt like they were just shut down right away. We have to walk it. If we're saying that we're asking for their opinions, and we've said that in what we just approved, and we're asking for them to bring and be that person for us, we have to, we have to be willing to take more time to spend to find out more about it. Because I feel like a lot of those things were just, no. And, and yet I have, I noticed that since we told, said no students could be from outside of Roseville, I am not saying that was the answer. We haven't had anybody come to the meeting and we don't have any, you know, we lack youth commissioners. People who are 17 tend to be, it's one and done, as many of you know, who are teachers. You, you know, you offended me once. I don't have that history to say, well, I'll come back and try it again, you know? Like I think we have to be willing to also change ourselves. We can make changes to the commission, but we also need to address how we relate to this particular commission. I don't think that the council has always done a historically good job in making this commission feel like they belong. And I feel it's a bit disingenuous to acknowledge Dugan Roseville in this process when they have often, they started because they felt like they didn't fit on the HR IEC. These are people who are on the group who got mad because no one listened to them. So let's make sure we look inward on ourselves and say, it's, it's how we approach these people. And I will take ownership for something that I wasn't part of. But I don't want us to say, well, we'll just let Dugan Roseville. That's not fair. They're a bunch of people who are, you know, they're not going to live forever. They're not, you know, they're retirees, people who have great ideas. But we can't excuse ourselves from that responsibility and just push it off to someone else. We have to still take the, and I think maybe there's space for two opportunities. Maybe there's a MAC with, with regard to the city and then there's also this commission. But I would be embarrassed to say, well, we're just going to fold the commission because it's better if they're that other thing. I, I really think, maybe we need to investigate how other cities were on their HRIC and what they do with them. Maybe we have to look outside of ourselves to see where the success lies. Maybe there isn't any. I don't know that. I haven't done that research. But I, I just think, I think we, if they bring things, we need to be more considerate and actually consider things. And just every time you shut somebody down, the chances of their coming back are less and less.
I'm going to just say one thing. I don't think, I hope it wasn't the case that we were shutting down the commission's suggestions at our last discussion. It was an opportunity for the council to get answers to understand better what was being proposed. In some cases, there were some questions about how things were worded and what it really meant. And so we were trying to understand that. And that was, that was the whole place I was coming from. And, and trying to, trying to be thoughtful about this whole thing. And so I, I don't know that I, I agree with that characterization specific to this. I think the council did have discussions about some of the other things that were mentioned and we came to conclusions about it. And, and they may not have been the conclusions that, that people liked. And I don't know that we can draw the conclusion necessarily that because we continued our existing policy of not having commission members from outside the city, that that is the reason that commission members from within the city are not participating as youth commissioners. I don't know the answer to what that is. But I think, I, I don't know that that generalization necessarily can be backed up. But that being said, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to have a conversation here and figure out how we can move forward. And I think we've heard constructive things. And I think that we don't have the answer necessarily this evening. And we need to continue to move towards what an answer would be. And I don't know that it's one answer. It may be a number of different things. So that's the perspective I'm coming from. And I do want to make sure we get a chance to hear from members of the public as well, because that's a part of it. But if there are, there are council questions or feedback, Councilmember Graff.
Just quickly, I, I am not married to the term human rights. That does not have to be in the, in the, I just want to be sure we, I think diversity, inclusion, whatever, that would be fine. I think it might help us just clarify something that is from the past. And that's not, no longer there if people are going into the commission with that. I think the other thing, I, the MAC was successful, but I don't think people stay on those things. And I think when you take it out from being a commission that's a formalized part of the city, you stand the chance of losing it over time much greater than if you just, and especially when you just have a group of volunteers doing it. That changes and then suddenly it just goes away. So I think that, I would be very concerned changing it to that type of a situation instead of a commission. Lastly, the other reason I do like the commission, I heard Councilmember Schroeder's comment that maybe people can have better conversations. I think those conversations are important when they're outside camera. But I do think the ones that are on camera are very important also. And especially for people who have been ignored or been excluded in the past. They were LGBT people, people were written out of many things in, in literature, people that were composers. It was never mentioned that they were gay or lesbian. And that was intentional. They became invisible people. So I really would hate to have that happen from that perspective. So those are just a couple of thoughts, but I do want to hear from the others too. And I think we're moving ahead. Don't get me wrong. I think we are.
Oh, it's, it's, nobody said it was going to be an easy process here. So.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I appreciate all these conversations and I do look forward to people from the HRIC speaking here soon. I would like to agree with what Mayor Rowe said about the ambassador idea. I think that is an excellent idea. And it seemed, I'm not sure it fits the role of a commission in the sense of providing feedback and, and whatever. So I know that I, I had an opportunity to speak with staff and they are already kind of saying, how could we flesh that into something that is, is something that the city does through the volunteer coordinator or some other avenue? Because there can be a positive role for that. And, and so I would, I would agree that we should continue to flesh that out and follow that idea that came forward from your process and kind of reviewing the future plans. Thinking about that human rights piece, I appreciate all the perspectives that you've provided. I would note that none of what's in this feedback and proposed direction framing thing is mine. But rather taken from the conversations that I've had with folks who are generally much more diverse than I am, right? This is not for me. And so my goal is that we are finding a way to critically look at how we're doing with the ENI, how we're doing with the SREAP, how we move forward with an update to the SREAP that shouldn't come first from us. And so that, to me, that's almost how you most impact, not just systemic racism issues, but other human, human rights issues. I would note, thinking about how other cities do this, certainly other cities do things differently. I looked at the eight suburbs that touch us from Maplewood, looping all the way around to Lauderdale, and only one has a human rights commission besides us. And we can think about how we want to, but it's, a lot of cities are, don't even have any look at this. And so I, I, I want to make sure that we understand that we're not abandoning that, but rather trying to delve into some of the stuff that's really important right now and that is important to people in our community. And so it's not an abandonment of, of that by any means. So I think that's what I want to say for now. Yeah.
Other thoughts from councilmembers, otherwise we'll certainly open it up for public comment. And I'm going to, unless the council objects, I'm going to be generous in the enforcement of the three-minute rule because I want to make sure that people have an opportunity to speak their, their piece and provide their input. That doesn't mean you get 10 minutes necessarily, but. That's a very good point. Actually, we are approaching our break time, so why don't we take about a five-minute break? And then we'll come back. I sense some urgency in taking a break, so.
Well, not yet.
So we're back from a short break here and we're hoping for public comment here. I did want to note, just from a process point of view, I think, you know, the, the purpose this evening is to, is to have some of this back and forth we've had at the council. I think it's to receive feedback from the commission members or other members of the public who may be interested. And then, you know, then we have to do, set hopefully some next steps in motion. So like I said earlier, we're, we're not going to have the solution this evening. And so I want to make sure that that's, that's sort of a, a base understanding going into the, to the public comment and the rest of our discussion in order to sort of help with understanding of where we're at and expectations. But with that, once again, we'll open it up for members of the public to speak. And we'll welcome folks to the table here. And once again, just by the rules, just introduce yourself and.
Thank you.
Have a seat. Welcome.
Thank you. I didn't know it was this scary, but here I am.
We, we've been on that side. We understand.
First of all, thank you so much. I've enjoyed every piece of what I'm listening. It's, it sounds positive.
And if you could introduce yourself.
My name is Gina Gurubahav and I am the HR IEC commission. This is my second year.
Thank you for indulging.
Yes. First of all, thank you so much for this meeting. I really enjoyed the back and forth and direct conversation. Because we never know what, I, this is my first council meeting, so I'm really enjoying that, that you guys do talk. You know, because assuming is like, do you guys really understand what we do? Then again, you, I felt like you understand what we are doing and you guys do talk about it. So I'm very happy about that.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rich James, and I'm the chair of the current chair of the HRIC. And I could talk for longer than 10 minutes, but I won't.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I want to say, correct a few things that I heard tonight that I think are wrong perceptions. Earlier, Councilman Etten, you said, what we have is not working. I think that should be what you had not working. You don't know what we've done since November. You really don't have any idea. And tonight was one of those nights where we were going to tell you what we have been doing and how we have restructured, how we have organized and reorganized ourselves so that we can accomplish things, things that we think are important. However, since I've been a member of this commission since 2019, you haven't told us what you think is important for us to do. So we come to you and say, this is what we think you think would be important in our city and present that in as a part of the work plan. And you say, yeah, yeah, go ahead, but make sure you do the essay, too. So we have been coming up with what we think is important. And if it hasn't matched up with what you think is important, you haven't told us that. You, I can't believe that you all just, at the end of January, decided, you know, I don't think this is working anymore, and I think we need to do something different about it. If you had concerns about how the HRIC is functioning, how the HRIC can structure themselves, why didn't you come to us and ask us that or present that to us? You certainly had that option. We would have listened. We would have changed. We would have helped. We would have done things, made things different than they were. But we haven't had that direction from you. You haven't said to us, we have a concern about this. And I'll get into a couple of concerns that you've expressed that I think are misguided. But you haven't done your job as Councilperson Strain pointed out. You haven't been, you don't do, I don't, we don't, so I expect you to direct us every single thing. But you should be able to say to us, we'd like you to focus this year on getting out into the community. And then we could come up with a work plan, say, this is what we think, and come back to you and say, this is how we think we can do that. You okay with that? That is not the way it's been happening. And if you think about it, it's been us coming to you to say, this is what we think you would be, we're guessing, we're mind-reading what you want us to do. And that's not fair to us. It's not fair to us to be judged that we haven't done the right thing without you telling us what you think the right thing should be. So we're kind of left in, we want to do a good job. We want to work. We don't want to just talk. We want to do things. But we don't know exactly what, we know exactly what we want to do. If you look at the information that is given to you, sent to you by Rebecca earlier, a few days ago. But we don't know. We don't know what you want, what you expect. Which leads me to my major point number two. You have put us in limbo. What do you want us to do after March 31st, when the, when people leave the commission? Do you want us to function on the old 205? And I hope you've thought about this. Do you want us to function on the old 205? Do you want us to follow through with the work plan that we've already developed? Do you want us to represent the city as we go out to events? What do we do? I think that's a decision you need to make tonight because we have one more commission meeting at the end of this month. And then what do we do? What do we do in April? So you need to decide that so that we have some direction, so that we know how we can function to make the city better, to help you fulfill your dreams, to help you fulfill your ideas. That's what we have been looking at all along to do. It hasn't worked in the past. I believe, Councilman Etten, it is, we have a plan for it to work now, but you don't know that plan. You need to know that plan before you make final decisions, I believe. Okay, this is all my, this is my opinion. You need to know what we have, how we have restructured ourselves and what we, how we see ourselves moving forward to work with you, to work with the community, to make something genuine happen that we are happy with, that we're not just talking, that we're doing. That's what everybody, that's a big frustration. I don't know what you heard, Commissioner Etten, Councilman Etten. But what I hear mostly is that all we do is talk. We talk, we talk, we talk, and we don't do, do, do. We have set up a structure where we're now doing. We have plans to do. We're limited in how much we can do because we're only going to have five commissioners, starting in April. So if you want us to do more things, you're going to have to help us by supplying more bodies to the commission because five people can only do so much and expend so much time as volunteers. Second part, I believe that your focus on human rights aspect of the 205 is misguided. We have never, since I've been here in 2019, we have never done, oh, we had to go out and talk to the people about human rights. We don't do that. We go out and we listen. And if people have issues about human rights, then we would bring back and talk about it and give it to you. We don't, we don't want to direct you. We want to tell you. We want to be ambassadors, as you keep bringing, as it's been brought up a lot tonight. We want to be ambassadors to the community so we can say, we are official commissioners of Roseville, and we want to hear what you have to say. We want to know what you have to do. We, in the past, we have not had a whole lot of opportunities other than standing around to maybe talk to some people, to have opportunities to go out and talk and bring back to you. This is what we're hearing from the community. This is what we believe are important issues that are bubbling out there that you don't know about and that we didn't know about until we started talking to the community. We have a plan to do that. We do have a plan to do that. You don't know the details of it, but we have a plan to do that, starting as soon as we can get it started, as soon as you let us know what you want us to do. So I think that, again, I could go lots of different points, but I'm going to try to keep this as short as I can make it. We don't expect missed solutions this evening, which is why the urgency of telling us what you want us to do, how you want us to function, starting in April, is so important for me as the chair of this group. And that, as I said, I have, I personally have a bunch of ideas about how you can put all these things together. Have the evaluative group working, have another, a group of non-commission people perhaps working with the commission so that you have your formal commission, but you also have another group that is coordinating with the commission. A bunch of ideas, and you have not reached out to me. No one in this group has reached out to me, which is the vice chair, to find out what we think about what we're doing, about what we have planned. And number one, I take that as a personal insult. And number two, I think it's a disrespectful thing to have done to the commission. You should have asked us early on, what do you do? We have a problem. What are you, a way to work this out? And so taking ownership, as Councilwoman Strain has mentioned, taking ownership of these, some of these issues. You have, at this point, created this crisis and this chaos that you have related, referred to in the past by, what's going on? How can we bring new commissioners into something that is not really organized, not really set up? We were prepared to go forward. We were prepared to do things. And then in January, it all stopped. So I urge you to start it up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
You're welcome.
And I can't tell you how much I appreciate this whole discussion and the opportunity to speak. I'm Elliot Frank. I'm also a commissioner on the HRIC. And I have felt some of the frustrations that you've all been talking about. Councilmember Strawn, do you remember when I was last in the seat at this table and you asked me what we were going to do about a particular problem that had arisen that's related to human rights? And I tried to word my answer carefully, saying that the commission really can't take sides and isn't really set up to do that. You can check your old minutes, and you'll find it. But we're waiting for a directive from you. And then we would be more than happy, once we have the authority, to take these issues up and do something with them. We're still waiting. So I just, you heard our chairperson's commentary, and I'd like to soften that just a little bit by making an invitation. When we have our commission meetings, the reason that you may not know the work we've done so far, which has been a lot of work led by Commissioner James, Commissioner Tidball, and Rebecca Olson, who has turned us into focus groups so that we could develop a scope for you, so that we could develop a work plan. Wouldn't it be wonderful if, when we hold these meetings and start to get our actual work done with your permission, if at least one of you could occasionally attend one of our commission meetings? I know your schedules are probably overloaded, and it's very difficult to do. So if that couldn't be done, maybe at least look at the minutes of our meetings and have a little discussion among yourselves and a communication, I would suggest, directly through our chairperson, who then comes back to us. And we can hear what it is you think, oh, this direction is not really right. How about this? Maybe we take it in that direction or do something. But communication is everything. It's everything. And so that's why this meeting tonight has been wonderful for all of us. And we so appreciate all of you. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Roseville and surrounding communities even. And hope that you will continue to give us the opportunity to do that. Please read not just the scope statement that we've submitted, but also the minutes of our last couple of meetings to see what our work plan is, how we've restructured ourselves, and what we plan to do. Some of it you heard this evening. But it's definitely worthwhile. And then have your discussion, and please do get back to us so that we know what we need to do to make this work. Because we've started. We really have started. And I think what we're doing is exactly along the lines of everything I've been hearing this evening. more bodies to the commission. Because five people can only do so much and has, expend so much time as volunteers. Second part, I believe that your, your focus on human rights aspect of the, of the two oh five is misguided. We, we have never, since I've been here two nineteen, in twenty nineteen, we have never done, oh, we had to go out and talk to the people about human rights. We don't do that. We go out and we listen. And if people have issues about human rights, then we would bring, bring back and talk about it and, and, and give it to you. We don't, we don't want to direct you. We want to tell you. We want to be ambassadors, as you keep bringing, as it's been brought up a lot tonight. We want to be ambassadors to the community so we can say, we are, we are official commissioners of Roseville, and we want to hear what you have to say. We want to know what you have to do. We, we, in the past, we have not had a whole lot of opportunities other than standing around to maybe talk to some people, to have opportunities to go out and talk and bring back to you. This is what we're hearing from the community. This is what we believe are important issues that are, that are bubbling out there that you don't know about and that we didn't know about until we started talking to the community. We have a plan to do that. We do have a plan to do that. You don't know the details of it, but we have a plan to do that, starting, starting as soon as we can get it started, as soon as you let us know what, what you want us to do. So, so I think that, again, I could go lots of different points, but I'm going to try to keep this as short as I can make it. We don't expect missed solutions this evening, which is why the urgency of telling us what you want us to do, how you want us to function, starting in April, is so important for me as the chair of this group. Ambassador, as I said, I have, I personally have a bunch of ideas about how you can put all these things together. Have the evaluative, the evaluative group working, have another, a group of non-commission people perhaps working with the commission so that you have your formal commission, but you also have another group that is coordinating with the commission. A bunch of ideas. And you have not reached out to me. No one in this group has reached out to me, which is the vice chair, to find out what we think about what we're doing, about what we have planned. And number one, I take that as a personal insult. And number two, I think it's a disrespectful thing to have done to the commission. You should have asked us early on, what do you do? We have a problem. Let, what do you, a way to work this out? And so taking ownership, as, as Councilwoman Strain has, has mentioned, taking ownership of these, some of these issues. You have, at this point, created this crisis and this chaos that you have related, referred to in the past by what's going on? How to bring new commissioners into do, to do, to, into something that is not really organized and not really set up? We were, we were prepared to go forward. We were prepared to do things. And then in January, it all stopped. So I urge you to start it up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
You're welcome.
And I can't tell you how much I appreciate this whole discussion and the opportunity to speak. I'm Elliot Frank. I'm also a commissioner on the H R I U C. And I have felt some of the frustrations that you've all been talking about. Councilmember Strawn, do you remember when I was last in the seat at this table and you asked me what we were going to do about a particular problem that had arisen that's related to human rights? And I tried to word my answer carefully, saying that the commission really can't take sides and isn't really set up to do that. You can check your old minutes and, and you'll find it. But we're waiting for a directive from you. And then we would be more than happy, once we have the authority, to take these issues up and do something with them. We're still waiting. So I just, you heard our chairperson's commentary. And I'd like to soften that just a little bit by making an invitation. When we have our commission meetings, the reason that you may not know the work we've done so far, which has been a lot of work led by Commissioner, James Commissioner Tidball and Rebecca Olson, who has, who turned us into focus groups so that we could develop a scope for you, so that we could develop a work plan. Wouldn't it be wonderful if when we hold these meetings and start to get our actual work done with your permission? If at least one of you could occasionally attend one of our commission meetings? I know your schedules are probably overloaded and it, it's very difficult to do. So if that couldn't be done, maybe at least look at the minutes of our meetings and have a little discussion among yourselves and a communication, I would suggest, directly through our chairperson, who then comes back to us and, and we can, can hear what it is you think, oh, this direction is not really right. How about this? Maybe we take it in that direction or, or do something. But communication is everything. It's everything. And so that's why this meeting tonight has been wonderful for all of us. And we so appreciate all of you. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Roseville and surrounding communities even. And, and hope that you will continue to give us the opportunity to do that. Please read not just the scope statement that, that we've submitted, but also the minutes of our last couple of meetings to see what our work plan is, how we've restructured ourselves and what we plan to do. Some of it you heard this evening. But it's definitely worthwhile. And then have your discussion and please do get back to us so that we know what we need to do to make this work. Because we, we've started. We really have started. And I think what we're doing is exactly along the lines of everything I've been hearing this evening. And thank you so much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Namit Vala. I'm on the H R I U C. Well, I want to bring something different to the table. It's other than the things on paper, we are really talking about is humans. And when you put out their awardings as human rights and asking people to, or looking for people to come on as, in a volunteer position, you're going to get people who are sacrificial or very passionate. And that's what I see in the commission overall, very highly passionate people and way more passionate than me. So I am honored to be just in all of their presence, all of your presence as well. So that's what I want to say, that this is something that the city has, is a treasure. It's something powerful. And I don't know, whatever can be done with this, there's, there is a big opportunity to use these wonderful humans for the work. Because what I know is they're, they are not going to, we are not going to stop just here. If it's not with the city, we are passionate, we're going to go ahead and do it anyway. But with the city, it's what we want to, we really want to see. We want to see people appreciate the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Amanda Becker. I'm also on the Human Rights Inclusion Engagement Commission. Next week is my last meeting. I decided to hold on to the edge and come speak with you. So thank you for the opportunity. I'm actually really excited about this. I think it's really important to have tension, and I think that's really what this commission is all about. And I second my fellow Commissioner Namit Vala's response. I think that this is a very passionate commission. And I do encourage the city to think about how to use people like myself and the people behind me within the city parameters. I think it's really important that people like us are invited to the table. I know there's some formalization around being invited, but I think that that is an opportunity to feel included, separate from having a volunteer commission where kind of anybody can participate. I think that's wonderful. I think the City of Roseville has a lot of really great functioning organizations like that, Do Good Roseville, et cetera. I think it's important to have part of government be to struggle through this publicly. I think it's a great opportunity to show our vulnerabilities, to talk about when we don't feel like we're represented enough at the table, or if we have trouble speaking at the table. I think some of my concerns that bubbled up were the fact that hearing about some of these frustrations, I knew people were leaving. I came on right when the SREAP was being formed. And my first question at my first meeting was, how is our group participating in this process? We have a new diversity and inclusion manager. That's awesome. How does this work? And nobody knew because why would you? We're trying to figure it out together. So I think that's part of the process. I think these are all growing pains. But I think to just sort of walk away or abandon it feels, it, it distresses all of us because that's the struggle we come to every month. That's why I show up for the meetings is with the hope and intention of working through some of these challenges and trying to figure out how we can participate in city government. And I really was pushing the idea of ambassadors because that's really what it felt like whenever I was here, is it was a group of people that wanted to be ambassadors, that showed up, that gave their time, had a lot of passion and cared about the umbrella idea of human rights and the idea of not being excluded. So I appreciate all of this dialogue. You know, I am saddened that next week's my last meeting. I'm starting a grad program where I would have renewed. But I just feel like it's really important to, to show up. I think if people have frustrations and concerns, I keep saying over and over again that my role is to find and build spaces where we feel safe to express our frustrations and our concerns. And I think that that has to be built into this commission in some way. Even if it is public, we have to acknowledge that that public display of tension and uncomfortableness is also important for transparency and growth. And I think that that's a beautiful part of the SREAP and showing that it's going to work. Because if we have a commission that's struggling with it, then we know it'll work in other areas of the city. So, thank you for this opportunity. I will continue to support my, my commissioners, and I hope to see things continue to evolve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we said, but SREAP stands for Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. So, always good to remind.
I also think it's important to mention that the SREAP isn't just about our racial equity, but it really talks about any marginalized community and how we can include people. So just, it's not just about racial equity, but about equity and the whole I D E A, you know? It's about accessibility of people. It's, it's the whole, the whole spectrum.
All right. I'm presuming there aren't other members of the public who wish to speak to this, this evening. So we appreciate the input. And I was more than happy to, to be generous on the time enforcement because I did want to make sure that we heard everything that you had to say. And we may have to take you up on the offer for, for the extended version, Chair James, so we'll figure that out. I do want to return to council discussion because I, I wanted to be responsive to a couple of things. One is certainly I think we need to, you know, provide that direction about sort of where to go from here as a commission. And an initial thought I had was certainly I would like to see an opportunity for the members of the commission to think about what had, what all has been said this evening, all of the different thoughts about, you know, what the commission can do, what the structure should be. And I really do appreciate the feedback in terms of that as well this evening. And maybe there's, you know, maybe that's the agenda for the next commission meeting maybe to, to, to have that conversation about what has been talked about and what was heard this evening. And then provide that reflection and feedback back to the council at a subsequent discussion. Because I think, you know, that, you're living it. And, and, and so if there's no question that, that what you have to say about what we've said, what you've heard, and, and how we can, how we can start to pull it together into that, that guiding framework for the future, I, I think is very important. I know that, that I heard that, that people had heard about topics and areas of focus that maybe hadn't been on the radar screen before. I also heard and was glad to hear that, that some of the things that have been maybe brought up this evening were already things that you're working on. I think that's terrific. And so I want to hear more about that. And, and, you know, I, speaking for myself, I certainly do try to follow all the minutes of the meetings. I do try to watch them on, on video as well. I, I got a little bit out of the habit after Councilmember Lolliberry and I first worked through the process of combining the two commissions. We were like, sort of running the first several months of meetings of the joint commission. And we sort of intentionally pulled way back at that point because we wanted to make sure and let, let the commission fly. But need, need to kind of get that out of my mindset a little bit to a certain degree. But that's just speaking for me. I'd love to hear from other council members some thoughts in response to that as well.
I guess I have a question. How does the council feel about us attending meetings? Obviously, you couldn't have three members there.
Well, I will say a couple of things. Certainly, if there are three or more of us there, we need to like sit in all different parts of the room and not have any conversations. But I don't know that that's prohibited. And certainly just on the, the, you know, the, the ultimate of, you know, being careful, it certainly could be posted as a, as a council meeting just to kind of cover that. That's, that's often done if there's going to be events where all the council members are going to be there, they, they just post it as a meeting and then that kind of covers that aspect. But, you know, I don't know that there's any real issues otherwise, as long as we're not, you know? One of the things, just speaking for myself again, that I try not to do is, is influence meetings that I attend. And so I'm very conscious of that. When I, there's been a few occasions I've gone to planning commission meetings where I really wanted to understand the issues that they were looking at. And I try purposely to kind of sit out of eye shot of the members and, and not take an active role in the discussion because that's not my role at that point. And so I'm very conscious of that. And so I think we, you know, our, our attendance at meetings isn't prohibited. It certainly is something we can do. I think we just all need to be careful about how we do it and, and understand how we can sometimes influence things just by being in the room.
I, I've, I've encountered that too, where I've gone and I've been called on or asked, you know, well, can the council? I'm like, I don't, I'm not there as an ambassador to, to the council at that point. I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone other than myself. So I have absented myself from physically being in the meetings just so that my presence doesn't impact. But it's not that I'm, you know, I'm in communication with folks who are on the commission and, you know, various commissions, someone else going on. And then we read the minutes and we get access to all that information. But it is hard to have you know that, you know, we are following and we know what's happening. We certainly could follow more, but it is a bandwidth issue too. But sometimes 1.75 speed still works. You talk really high, but.
Sounds like my daughter.
I can get through three times as many books.
Other thoughts from councilmembers? Reaction to my sort of suggestion that the next thing that the commission does is kind of talk about this, Councilmember?
I would agree with that as an important topic. And then depending on where we come to in our future meetings, there's, you know, it's not a long-term plan. I, I'm wondering about where we are at as a council for our own next steps.
I feel like we've been asked, so I don't want to leave that off the table too, but asked, are we encouraging this group to continue meeting as an entity since as of April first, they no longer, they're no longer in our city code as one of our groups?
Well, they are.
They are in the city code.
So they're there.
It just hasn't changed. It's the old language.
Their old language. So as far as we're concerned, as of right now, they continue as is with five members once the next meeting moves forward while we continue to assess.
I think so, yes.
I think it may be a multi-meeting process. It may not be just the next meeting that they have a conversation about this or that we do. So yeah, I think it's going to be a little bit iterative. And I, and I think a lot of the work that's been done on the work plan up to this point, you know, hopefully that, that doesn't go away. Hopefully there's a way maybe to not super get active in doing a lot of it necessarily, just if there's a sense that it may or may not match with kind of where things have been going in the conversation. Because I certainly want to be respectful of, of your time and efforts too, in the sense that if there's, there's something there that, that you're not a hundred percent sure the council's on board with, maybe that's not an area to focus on. But if there are other ones that seem very much in line with what we've all been talking about, then I, I certainly don't want to discourage people from being involved in those. It's not, it's a little bit of a wishy-washy answer, I understand that. That's, that could be said that that's nothing new with our council feedback to this commission. But anyway, other thoughts from other?
I mean, I'd like to make sure that we're operating, at least at this point, at least I am, that we are going forward with the Human Rights Commission, whether or not the name changes or the, how they function changes, but over, that they're not being replaced by a MAC-like entity at this point. And I would like to operate under that assumption for, until we've made a bigger decision. And I guess I'm not a hundred percent convinced after this conversation tonight that that is shared by everyone on this, at this table.
I think that's, that's probably a fair assessment. I don't know that I have a strong opinion one way or the other necessarily. I'm still waiting to, to hear more and to understand more about the, the different approaches. So I don't know that I can go as far as to make that commitment fully, but I don't want to rule that out completely or rule something else in as much better. I just don't know. Councilmember?
I would argue that the Human Rights Commission continues under our current two oh five, probably mostly in response to these discussions at this time. If a more formal proposal is going to come forward, if council wants that, and the committee is prepared to put some more things down to be discussed. If we get to that point and we want to do that, then that's going to be continued help that they provide. But I also don't think it makes sense, as the mayor said, to jump into a bunch of work plan that is not fitting some of this discussion.
Well, if I were on that group, I don't know that I would want to continue if I had no idea. Because I feel like it went from murky to.
Well, I think there's, it's pretty clear we need to finish this process.
Yes.
That's like priority number one.
But if you don't know if at the end of this process, and I guess we never know, but you could get laid off, you're done at the end of this process, it is hard to go to the last day, whenever that is, if you think that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so I feel like we've disincentivized folks even more than they were before.
Well, a couple of things to that. I would say that, that first of all, you know, hopefully everybody that's passionate about these topics in this discussion, whatever the outcome is, has a way to continue to participate. I don't think we're saying, you know, at the end of this, thanks a lot, go away. But how can we find a way to keep everybody engaged in, in, in whatever it is? And, and hopefully, from my perspective, everybody that, all of us that get to that point, you know, get to a point that, that generally is satisfactory to all of us too. I mean, that's, that there has been buy-in and, and back and forth to the point where there tends to be some agreement as to what that path forward is. And so that, that would help that process in terms of how that transition, whatever it might be, happens from my perspective. It's still not a, a, you know, super firm commitment because I just don't want to say something that I'm not sure is, is the right answer at this point. But I think we have, we have probably at least a couple of more meetings, and I think we should get the, the most out of the people that we have involved and continue, will have, continue to have involved in the commission as part of this process from my perspective. I don't know, Councilmember Shorter, have you got thoughts? I know your hand wasn't up, but I, I didn't want to, didn't want to let you off the hook either.
Just basking in the sun.
Well, first I wanted to say is, you know, instead of going to the meetings, watching the meetings, which is what I have done, so, you know, they may not think, you know, some, you know, with the one comment was that we don't know what they're doing, but actually, I've watched the meetings and read the minutes. And so I think, I think, and I'm assuming the rest of the commission or council has probably know some understanding of what work they've been doing. So I just wanted to make, you know, it's not like we're ignoring it. We actually do feel that that work is important and we do pay attention to it, even though we may not be at the meeting. I watch it on, on, you know, on, after the meeting typically, I'll come home and watch it. So, so I may not be sitting there, but I, I just wanted to make that point that yes, I am paying attention to what they're doing there. And I do think it's important that we all get on the same page with this. I know, you know, and I don't want to put Rebecca on the, on the hot seat here, but she's been very involved with both groups, the council and the subcommittee, well, actually three, and the commission. And so she's got a lot of, a lot of input that, at least the subcommittee, Jason and I have gotten some really good feedback from, you know? So we've all had different conversations with different people. So I mean, so some people might think, oh, you didn't hear from me, but you might have talked to Rebecca or Jason or me. So it doesn't necessarily mean you talk to all of us. I just wanted to make sure that people's voices are being heard, even though they may not think that. So I, I don't want people to feel that we are, are ignoring that. And with that said, I think, I don't, you know, I would suggest that obviously we need more work on it, you know? And I think the subcommittee could work with staff and come up with some more thoughts and, and come back. I don't know. I mean, that's, I guess, if I'm trying to think about going forward, I think that might be the, the way to go.
So you're saying have the subcommittee take this feedback this evening?
Yeah, heard tonight and, and all the conversations, and then work with staff to, you know, maybe recap it a bit and see if there's some thoughts on how to. I think we need to continue. I think we need to continually distill it down to where we want to end up. We have a lot of ideas that went around today. And I think we're going to have to try to find common denominator and then figure out what's the path forward. It's really, it's just that you can tell that everybody isn't on the same page. And somehow, first, the council needs to be on the same page. That's really important because they're correct. We cannot give them good guidance if we all aren't on the same page. And so I think that's what we need to do first.
So, Councilmember?
Your next meeting is next Wednesday, the 20th. Is that correct? So I think that we would wait for any ideas coming forward from that before we would, as a subcommittee, work on anything else.
Yep, absolutely.
I think it would be good, and I haven't forgotten to chant here now. I think it would be good, though, that if we can try to get some sort of synopsis of tonight's discussion fairly quickly that can get into both our hands and the commission's hands to make sure that the topics that have been discussed and the thoughts and proposals that have been out there aren't sort of lost and we make sure we all have a chance to sort of respond to those and provide the feedback to those. So I would appreciate if that's something maybe, I don't know, Ms. Olson, if that's something you feel you can take on?
I will do my best.
Are you talking about something more focused than the minutes?
More, well, I think something that says, here's the things we talked about. Here's some of the areas of things that we need to figure out about this. You know, A, are there things that a group should be doing that maybe haven't prior to now been part of the conversation? Are there things that we have already talked about that we've maybe zeroed in a little bit on that we can capture as part of that? I would have to review this meeting and discussion. It's all kind of floating around out there right now. But I think, I think that effort to sort of synthesize it and then provide it as something that we can all sort of use as the framework to work from in our discussions, I think that will be helpful to everyone in the process. And I don't want to just put it all on you necessarily if there's, you know. Thank you, Councilmember. So that, if that makes sense from the council's perspective. And then that way, that could be a little bit of a framework for the commission's discussion at their meeting too, because they'll have all the issues kind of laid out and can kind of weigh in and see how they might interact with each other. Councilmember Strong, sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I appreciate Councilmember Schroeder's interest in getting the council on the same page. But I think right now it feels like it's, I don't know how to say it without. It feels like there's three people who are pretty open to being, disbanding this committee and two people pretty passionate about not. And I don't see how there's a common ground on that.
I would react to that by saying, I don't think I've said that I'm interested in disbanding. I'm interested in making sure whatever we do is the best for the city, best for the people that are involved, and ultimately the best outcome for the community. And I don't know what that is yet, so I can't say. I mean, that's where I'm at. Unfortunately, we're not going to do kind of the back and forth necessarily. Do you have just a quick thought? Quick thought?
We are prepared to go ahead and function as we have. And for you to take as long as you need to make your decisions. We are not, at the last meeting we talked about, we're going to go, we want to go ahead. So we're willing to do that if you tell us that's what you want us to do. So we can continue functioning the way that we have been. And if there's an end to it, we all understand that that may happen. But I'm confused about what you want us to do in April, frankly. You know, so my proposal is to say, continue what you're doing until decisions are made.
Got it. And I think more or less that's what we were saying. And we just also want to be respectful. We don't want to say, you know, continue doing what you're doing if some aspect of that just doesn't seem to be fitting with what we've been talking about. That was all I was trying to say is that, you know, I don't want you to be, just continue doing that if you have a sense that may not make sense to spend a lot of your time on it because you're not going to want to do that anyway. But by all means, I think that wherever, wherever things that are already in the works kind of match up with generally what we've been talking about, I wouldn't say to stop on it because what could be the harm in getting the benefit of that work from the city's perspective? Any contrary points of view from council members?
I think they're functioning under the current code, which is the scope. So nothing's changed. This is a discussion of something in the future. It's nothing right now. So I would say do what you're doing and.
As best you can under the admittedly quite lacking current code. We'll add that to it. But I think, you know, a big priority of certainly the very next upcoming meeting, if not meetings, is this conversation about this. So I think that's huge. And I would actually say probably a higher priority than unless there's immediate things on your work plan that absolutely need to be acted on quickly. This, getting towards the conclusion of this process needs to happen quicker rather than later. And that may go into, because you meet monthly, so it may go into your April meeting as well. Other things, Ms. Olson?
I'm just looking for some clarity to make sure that I am confident where we're headed. So the commission will be operating, kind of continuing the work that they're doing. But for their next meeting next week, council would like them to provide some, like, debrief from this meeting, provide some reflections and feedback that will then come forward to council for consideration at an upcoming meeting when you have your next conversation on this. Is that, is that correct?
I believe so.
And then I will work on providing some kind of synopsis of this meeting and some of the issues that were raised for both the commission and the council to address. And then we'll place a conversation on an upcoming agenda for the council for all of this. Does that sound?
I think that sounds good. Very good. Well, thank you, everyone. We're a little bit over our schedule for tonight. But I think once again, when we do that in these situations, it means that we've had a good conversation and hopefully move the process forward. There are actually, Ms. Olson, I don't know if you're prepared to do a future agenda review?
I have one up. I just have to, I don't know if this computer is up or not.
It's probably not connected. Ian's here. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Do you not do that?
It's highly secretive. It's not listed on the computer at all. Okay, future agenda. So as of right now, at your next meeting, March 18th, you have a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is recognition of outgoing commissioners, as was mentioned. We do have several commissioners that are terming off. And we typically do a recognition of those commissioners and present them with a certificate. We will also be accepting a grant for the housing navigator position, which came through. There will be a conversation on the receiving the excess cash reserve report. And then a couple of meetings ago, you had an ordinance regarding the water meter security deposit that is coming back for final consideration as well. At your April 8th council meeting, we have a couple of items on there. Issuing an RFP for the Lexington Park Playground. We will also have the hotel licensing ordinance for your consideration as well. And then for 35 Judith abatement assessment. And then we should have our new equity and inclusion manager being introduced at that meeting. That individual is slated to start March 25th for us. On the April 15th city council work session, we'll have a conversation regarding the RFP for recycling and carts. There will be an update on the County Road C project, as well as our forestry and EAB program. There's also going to be a conversation, a presentation regarding smoke-free housing. And this was something that came forward through a conversation with, I'm forgetting the coalition's name, but they will be here. And then also begin some discussions on strategic planning for later this year. So as of right now, based on conversations tonight, we may have another conversation on this in one of those upcoming meetings as well.
I was going to say maybe the 8th would fit well, timing-wise, with the scheduling of the next HREC meeting as well. Okay. And it doesn't look like it's too, too full of an agenda at this point. Very good. Well, if there's no further business before the council, Councilmember?
Two of us, and this time I actually have done it, have filled out our review of the city manager. And we're hoping to get that by Friday. Add to our plates, in case.
So I should have paid more attention to that email I got. He wasn't naming names.
No, the last time it was me who hadn't done something, noting that this time I have. But I understand why not everyone's all of it.
If there's no further business before the council, I motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Didn't see the little gold hand raised.
I know, and I gotta be, I gotta be more vocal about it, I guess.
And sorry for straining your voice to do that.
I just, I attended the Day on the Hill for the League of Minnesota Cities. And that was a really good event. And I had a bench handout sent out to all of you about the issues that they were looking at. And I wanted to give everybody a copy of that because I thought it was really good information. So that's what that packet is there for from that. So yeah, it was a, it was a good event and it's good to see what, what LMC is working on for us and then what some of their concerns are about. So anyways, that's what I had.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Schroeder. And you just reminded me, and I should remember this because it just happened today, but I was just down at the legislature testifying on behalf of the local broadband franchising bill which is down there, which is one of our legislative priorities. So it meshed well with my role on the commission as well. So it's wearing two hats. And I just had heard that that was the text I got during the meeting was that the attorney for the commission said that the bill was voted out of committee and on to the next step. So he's going to follow up with me on any steps in the Senate too. So anyway, that's. I think it's a good thing. All right. With that, I heard a motion from Councilmember Graff to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Schroeder, nothing else? We have a motion to adjourn. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Ed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Aye.
May you row.
Aye. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
I think that's the last thing I want to say.